Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America and to the Republic of Republicans, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Ramirez, you have roll call.
Yes.
Okay, next, purpose of the meeting is to approve any personnel and other matters properly presented. Do we have any public regarding agenda items? And this is for our special meeting. Seeing none. Okay, next, we have, I'll need a motion to approve for election of the LTS as presented.
Motion.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have academics. We've got A, field trip request, B, art show agreement at the Palmer Mall. If I could have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve field trip request as presented, and motion to approve the art show agreement at the Palmer Mall as presented. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have budget and finance. A, motion to approve the participation in the Colonial IU 20 copy paper janitorial product bid for the 25-26 school year. The bid will be awarded on February 25th, 2025. B, motion to approve an increase of pay from $2.25 to $2.60 for each of the three elected municipality tax collectors for each tax bill payment collective effective July 1st, 2025. And C, motion to approve the assessment appeal stipulations as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have other business. A, motion to approve the expulsion hearing waiver form number 54558 as presented.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have interested citizens regarding non-agenda items. Anyone interested in speaking? Okay, seeing none, call for an adjournment of the special meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we will move into our regular standing committee meeting. Roll call is the same, we've already done the pledge of allegiance. So next, we will have the superintendent's report, Ms. Piazza.
Thank you. I will remind the public that we do have one board member on Zoom or on call with us this evening, so we thank Ms. Zando Dennis for joining us that way. I really don't have much to share out today, other than the weather has been trying for us this month, so we have some back-to-back meetings. Just so the public knows, we also do have an executive session meeting tomorrow scheduled for the purpose of personnel negotiation matters, so that will take place tomorrow. We have a few shout-outs for this month. This month is Career and Technical Education Month. This is also National African American History Month. School Resource Officer Day is February, was February 15th. And February 22nd is School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. So we certainly want to thank our resource officers and our bus drivers for the work that they do on a daily basis. Neither of those jobs are easy jobs, and particularly would not want to be a school bus driver with all the responsibility of the lives on their buses, so we certainly appreciate the work that they do in that department. And certainly, Mr. Bernhardt is here tonight as well, and I want to thank you for your leadership in that department this evening. The only report I have is we are going to invite our CIT representatives here to...
Sorry.
Not tonight, sorry. Okay, my fault. So I think that concludes my report for this evening. A little abruptly, move on from there. Thank you, everyone.
Do we have any other presentations? Just the...
We're just going to go through regular presentations.
All right. Okay, so next, we have academics. Dr. Draper?
Good evening, everyone. This evening, the curriculum instruction team will be bringing before you presentations on our data for local assessments that were administered in the beginning of the year and also the middle of the year. So we're going to be presenting screening data as well as growth data. We will also have a presentation by one of our building principals, Mr. Couples, at Paxenosa Elementary School, as well as, I'm happy to see here, Andrea Bell. She is an educational consultant with PTAN, who's going to be doing a presentation about their data, particularly in kindergarten, after they've been using a program called the ECRE program, and they're going to give you a little bit more information about that during their presentation. And then finally, this evening, the CNI team will be sharing information about our middle schools designation being a cascading CSI school. So we're going to go ahead and get started with the mid-year review. Thank you, Gino. So our objectives this evening for sharing this data is we want to be able to share with you, where did we start in the beginning of this school year, and where are we at this point? At the end of this school year, we will be coming back before the board to share with you our end-of-the-year data. And so for this evening, we're going to share the data, explain and share with you our mid-year progress update, some key data points, some of our successes, and what we plan to do moving forward from this point on. Next. And so just to provide some background, all of the work that we are doing is in alignment with the comprehensive plan that we drafted together during the last school year, and we have here that by the end of 26-27, our goal is to increase the percentage of grade three students who are reading on or above grade level. And that is by the end of 2027 that we plan to achieve that goal. However, this year, our target is to have 70% of all of our K through third grade students reading on grade level. Additionally, our second goal, we want to achieve a proficiency rate of 80% or higher in ELA and mathematics for students in grades K to eight. We want to accomplish that again by the end of 2027. However, this year, our target is to have 65% of our students who will achieve this proficiency in ELA and mathematics. And so we will be taking a look at data and sharing with you how our students are doing thus far, and where we are in terms of meeting on these goals. So the types of data that we're going to present to you this evening will be Acadient, which is primarily for our kindergarten and through second grade students in ELA. We have our STAR and reading math data, as well as IXL data, and we're going to be sharing with you both screening and growth data. And so I'm going to ask at this time, turn it over to Ms. Hilton, who is going to be sharing our Acadience data with you.
Thank you, Dr. Draper. Good evening, everyone. So as Dr. Draper explained, we have both screening and benchmark data. The first measure that our kindergarten, first and second grade teachers look at, administrators, is our Acadients. Many of you may be familiar with it, referred to as DIBELS. So the Acadients is a little different than some of our other screening, or other benchmarking tools, because it is a risk assessment. It indicates which students are on track for meeting benchmark goals in future assessments. So it measures criticalness, critical skills, including phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, and comprehension. Can go to the next screen, Gino. So the first screen here is kindergarten. You'll see that there's the beginning-of-the-year rainbow and the end of, or the middle-of-year rainbow. And obviously, we're looking for lots of greens and blues. Over on the left, I indicated if students are in the red or yellow, they are at risk at the beginning of the year for not meeting the benchmark reading assessments in the future. So those are the students that we would refer to for intervention, both in our WINTIME and our Tier Three time. The blue and the green students are indicating, those indicators show us that those students are likely to meet benchmark, benchmarks in the future for those critical reading skills. So you'll see at kindergarten, at the beginning of the year, we had 53 students on track for meeting mid-year benchmark goals. And in the middle of the year, 66% of them are still showing that they're on track for meeting those future goals. Over on the right is the progress report, and what we look at in our students is their pathways of progress. And this, this measure is, in my opinion, the most critical measure, because this shows which students are, are growing typically or above typical progress, based on thousands of data points across the country, comparing our students to students at the same grade level that began the year at the same composite score. So we are looking for a score of at least 80% or higher. So we should see 80% of our students making typical or above typical progress, leaving for about 20% that might need that intensive reading intervention. So you'll see, right now, we're at 63 for kindergarten. So in first grade, you'll see not much change from the beginning of the year to middle of year. This is very typical for first grade. The middle-of-year first graders are introduced to what's called the ORF, and that's the oral reading fluency. So it's the first time that we're asking kindergarten, our first graders to read connected text. So that's very challenging, and we're also starting to measure comprehension. So moving really from decoding to more comprehension measures, and that's very challenging for many of our students in the middle of first grade. So you'll see in first grade, we are making, 54% of our students are making typical or above typical progress, and we are still at only about 51% of our students in first grade not at risk, or that are on track for meeting benchmark at the end of the year. So we have quite a few students in first grade across the district still receiving intervention support during WINTIME and Tier Three. In second grade, you'll see, this is, this is like the relay race. So we're passing the baton from kindergarten to first to second, in hopes that we have students, more and more students, reading on grade level and less students at risk. And you can see that bar looks a lot more blue and a lot more green, so that's a good sign. And we'll see, you see at the middle of year, 71% of our students are on track at second grade, and 63% of them are making typical or above typical progress.
So we'll, I'll review with you the STAR data as well as IXL. So as Mrs. Hilton mentioned, we're using that Acadence data to identify both Tier Two and Tier Three interventions and supports for our students in reading in grades K2. The same would ring true for our STAR data in grades three through eight for reading, and grades one through eight for mathematics. So STAR is used for two purposes. The first is to screen students who are in need of intervention, identify those students, and to provide them with that intervention, and use this as a progress monitoring tool. But it's also used to measure student growth. And that growth is from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, and across grade bands. One of the benefits to the STAR universal scale is that we can actually track progress across grades, in addition to how students are progressing during a particular school year. Gino, you can go ahead and click to the next slide. So as you can see here, on the left side of the screen, what you're going to be seeing is our fall benchmark, and the percentages of students at or above benchmark. And then on the right side there, you're going to see the percentage of students who are at or above benchmark in the winter, and then the difference would be in that third, fourth column to the right. So as you can see, we're seeing growth in each of those areas in reading, as well as mathematics, as listed there with the green arrows pointing up. So this is typical, this time of year, to see those percentages increase. Once again, I want to reiterate, as I've stated previously, is that the benchmark goes up. So what students are expected to know and be able to do skill-wise on these assessments increases as they progress throughout the course of the school year. So it's not a stagnant number to say, once you get to the 500, you're at or above, but that number is constantly moving depending on the grade level. So the expectation is there is continuous growth throughout the year, but that we are also getting students and filling in the gaps, so that they are now reaching that at-or-above-benchmark standard that we're placing on them by the district. Moving over to the far-right category there, we did a little adjustment or an upgrade to our presentation, and now we can see our screen report right next to our growth report. And so that far-right column there shows the percentage of students who are meeting their growth target. That growth target is 35 SGP, and what that means, it's typical growth. So as Mrs. Hilton mentioned, typical growth for the Acadence data, we're looking at 54, 60% of our kids. We've always set the standard here is we want to be at 70%. So we want 70% of our students to be at typical growth, and right now, we are reaching that with many of our grade levels, in both reading and mathematics, but there is still some work to do in other grades. And so we're looking at a couple of factors that we'll talk about later in summary with the data, in terms of being able to move that forward, right, and get higher numbers of students meeting their growth target during the course of a year. Gino, you can click to the next screen. In this, now we're looking at mathematics, so as you can see, more of our students are hitting the growth target in mathematics right now, in terms of that 70% marker, and we are seeing steadily, steady increases in the number of students at or above benchmark from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. One last point before we go into the IXL data, it's important to note that the STAR data is our closest correlation to the PSSA data, so it gives us an indicator on where students are today and where they will be if they are in a tested grade, for example, in grades three through eight. And so that's really important for us, to be able to see what those end-of-year goals are, and then our progress towards reaching those end-of-year goals using that STAR data. Gino, IXL. Okay, so we also have another screener, if you will, and a way to measure student growth, which is IXL. One of the other reasons why we use IXL in the district is to develop individual student growth plans that are based upon their individual skill sets. So there's a diagnostic assessment that's given to all of our students in K through eighth grade, in both ELA and mathematics. That diagnostic assessment then gives our students individual skill plans that our students can work on during the week, and each of those then sets a standard for that growth during the course of the year. So if Gino shows us the next slide, we're able to see where students are in relation to the benchmark in the fall and the benchmark in the winter. This benchmark is different than the STAR benchmark. It's measuring different things, as well as the cut scores are different from the STAR assessment. Doesn't necessarily correlate as strongly to the PSSA, but it gives us an indicator of where students were at the beginning of the year versus where they are today in that winter assessment. As you can see, in most of our grade levels, similar to the STAR data, we are seeing increases of the number of students at or above benchmark. The two pieces there that are not is sixth and seventh grade, and there are some slight decreases in those two particular areas. Once again, the benchmark continues to rise as students progress throughout the year, so it is not uncommon to see some of those students not reaching that. And then we look at the far-right category again, which is just as important to us, is the percentage of students meeting their growth target. So for IXL, the expectation is that students have 100 points of growth for one school year. So mid-year, that target is 50 growth points during the course of the school year. Each of our buildings pushes students to try to, to work towards two skills of proficiency or mastery per week, and that will be, keep them on track for reaching that 50 scaled points by mid-year, and that 100 scaled points by year-end. So that's kind of our growth layout there for reading. Gino, math? So taking a look at math, we're seeing similar increases and/or a leveling there in grade six and grade one right now. What we're seeing, though, is that even in those, in the grade, for example, grade one, 80% of the students are meeting their growth target already at mid-year of 50 points of growth, even though we're not seeing an increase of the students at or above. Starting off the year at 82% is a pretty high bar, and it tells us a little bit about the progress that our students have made from kindergarten into first grade, and having such a high number in terms of students at or above benchmark. Once again, another data point that our MTSS teams are using at the building level to determine student intervention, and then progress towards reaching their mid-year and year-end goals. Gino?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cox and Ms. Hilton. And so when we take a look at this, the data that was just presented to you, I will say that considering that we rolled out a new curriculum this year in ELA and mathematics, and it was brand-new to all of the staff, what I would say, in the beginning, limited professional development, we still have more professional development that we would like to do with our staff, I would say that overall, we are pretty pleased with where the data is at this point in time. As Mr. Cox said, there is still more work that needs to be done, because typically, we would like to see at least 80% of our students who are performing at or above grade level, with the understanding that sometimes with that 20% through the use of intervention or other services, you know, students may need additional support in order to grow to meet the benchmarks by the end of the year. And so, like I said, with this, at this point, we're kind of pleased with where we are. However, I mean, it does beg for us to ask the questions, you know, why aren't some students showing the expected growth that we would like to see, particularly around mid-year, and then what are some other things that we can learn from one another? And so through our conversations, through our walkthroughs, and reviewing the data, one thing that we are going to focus on as a team is the preservation of time. And so making sure that we have dedicated time for ELA and mathematics and our other content areas, and making sure that we have enough time in our schedule to, that teachers can instruct in these areas. And that was something that had to be changed during the course of the year, because we were finding that there wasn't enough ELA time, you know, on the schedule for teachers, all right? And so that was something that we made a minor change this year. We're going to revisit it again, so we can start the school year off with having the amount of time that we feel would be appropriate for teachers to teach these core content areas. Also, bless you, looking at our core instruction, again, keeping in mind that we did roll out a new curriculum, and so we did do a soft start this year. We wanted to give teachers an opportunity to kind of become familiar with those tools, but in the meantime, the teachers were using some of the new materials, and then also kind of, you know, reverting back to what was more comfortable. And so we have had the conversations with our teachers, particularly grades K to five at this point in time, that, you know, moving forward from this point forward to the end of the year, to really become, to use a core, a board-approved curriculum moving forward, and then also looking at explicit instruction. Are we making sure that instruction is being provided explicitly, using the graduate release model, where there is a modeling of the skill, where there is guided practice of the skill, and then allowing the students to actually practice the skill through different genres and in different content areas? Also taking a look at intervention, in our conversations with our interventionists at different buildings, we want to include them more in the whole group, small group time during, during that tier-one instruction, and so some of that wasn't happening as much, and, you know, just because that was a directive that was given at one point in time. And so we want to talk, just make some shifts into having our interventionists involve a little bit more with that time. Also looking at attendance, you know, which is a factor. You know, we have, where we have students who may not be in school consistently, and then we also have teachers who may not be there consistently. And so we know that both plays a huge role in ensuring that, you know, students are getting the knowledge and able to practice it, but that consistency is really going to be important for student improvement. And so also, what can we learn from each other? You know, as you look at some of this data, you will see that there might have been some growth, and some grade levels are doing really well, and, and Ms. Hess, I know that you did make a request to see it broken down by schools and grade levels, which we will certainly get that information out to the entire board. But there are some areas where there is tremendous success, and so just begin to have those conversations within our POCs about what's taking place in those classrooms, so that we can share practices across the district. And so just to highlight success, grades K1, 2, they certainly have met their end-of-the-year target already by having 65% proficiency in IXL reading. And then also kindergarten growth at Paxenosa Elementary School. I certainly don't want to take this away from Mr. Couples and Ms. Bell, but I have to say that kudos to Mr. Couples and his team, along with the partnership of PTAN, that the growth for our kindergarten students have grown tremendously since the beginning of the school year. And so I'm going to stop there and let Mr. Couples kind of talk a little bit more about that. So are we on track to meeting our district targets for this year one in ELA? Thumbs up, yes, we are. And for mathematics, we still have some more work to do, and so we continue to have those conversations with our principals, and also with our coordinators and teachers. So for next steps, what are we looking at? So our master's schedule, so I talked about that a little bit. We want to revisit that schedule and increase dedicated uninterrupted time for ELA and mathematics. And so the focus on, on core is 80% is the rule, right? They are making sure that that time is dedicated. So in elementary schools, you know, we know a lot goes on, we want those to be the years, you know, not just elementary, but all years that students remember throughout their educational career. And so we do understand that there are special events that come up, where parent volunteers come in, other volunteers come in, and that we welcome that. But on those days, are we making sure to come back and make sure that we're doing ELA and mathematics? So we're going to take a look at that schedule, and have more conversation about that. We're going to take, continue to look at our core instruction and our use of the curriculum, and so we want to implement the approved curriculum with fidelity. And then also, we're going to continue to conduct our walkthroughs and provide feedback to our building leadership. Assessments, we're going to continue with the screening and benchmark assessments that we shared here today, but another form of assessment that we have to take a look at is the program-based assessments and common assessments throughout the district. And so each curriculum has an assessment built within it, and so we want to begin to implement those during the 25-26 school year, so we can better assess instruction towards those skills. And then just ongoing professional development. And so providing that, the dedicated professional development and coaching, which I think is huge. I think oftentimes, you know, myself, I remember as a teacher, also as a building principal, we provide professional development, and it's like a once-and-done. We hear the information, and then the expectation is to go back and do it. But I think what's been very beneficial and was helpful is to also receive that coaching on what they received. And so they have somebody who's following up with them, who's kind of checking in and, you know, to provide some, you know, tips along the way. And so that concludes our portion of the middle-of-the-year data review. Before we move on to Paxenosa Elementary School, I'd just like to open it up if there are any questions from board members about the data that was presented thus far.
Okay, I do.
Sure.
So first of all, I guess, you know, I think it's great we've got growth, and we continue to talk about what the growth is. The concern I have is looking at a lot of the numbers, and still seeing that maybe we have 50% who are meeting that target. However, we still have that other 50% that's not.
Right.
So it's a serious concern. We continue to have that concern, we continue to have that issue. So I guess, you know, looking at a lot of the stuff of how we're talking about, how we're going to proceed and everything. But I'm curious to know, in some of the things, like in the walkthroughs, because that's, it's on there twice, as far as the walkthroughs, what type of data do you get out of the walkthroughs that is helping to assess all of this? Can you explain? Because I, I also think there are some people here that maybe don't understand that, or haven't heard any of that information. And then I'll get the rest of my question.
Sure. And I will say that in the beginning of the school year, when meeting with the building principals, and we ask each building principal to kind of do, conduct walkthroughs throughout the school year, and we have a set target number of walkthroughs that we ask them to do throughout the year. So let's say 30 by 30. So in the beginning of the school year, 30 walkthroughs by, let's say, September 30th as an example. And so we always provide like some guidelines for, for things for which they should be taken a look at. So we take a look at domain two, I would say, for example, which is classroom environment. So that has to do with, is the classroom set up in a way that will allow instruction to take place? So is the environment conducive to student learning? Are procedures set in place so that we have that uninterrupted time for instruction? So for example, do students know the routines? Do they know the procedures? Are those being taught in the beginning of the school year? And we provide time for that to be taught in the beginning of the school year, so that once instruction begins, then the students already know the routines, and then there are smooth transitions from whole group... are smooth transitions from whole group to small group, students know what the materials are and so forth. That's one. Two, we'll, we take a look at the classroom setup in terms of, are there collaborative spaces for students to work together, you know, in groups for project-based learning or just for accountable talk purposes or to have that practice of the skill that's being taught within, within the lesson that day? We take a look at instruction. So are we hearing, are we seeing that gradual release? Are we hearing and seeing that there is a mini lesson where a skill is being taught explicitly, followed by guided practice along with the classroom teacher, followed by practice with, with students or doing it on their own independently with a classroom teacher working with a small group of students who may not have gotten it, you know, from the explicit teacher or from the mini lesson. And so I will say that through, from the walkthrough data, we, are we seeing that? Yes. But I will also say that what we are seeing is where the teacher is teaching and, and we're not seeing a lot of practice of that skill with the students. And so we have to be able to know that students can practice that skill independently in the presence of the classroom teacher and that they are collecting that data to be able to then pull those small groups or to revisit a lesson if necessary. So we always provide like guidelines for when principals are doing those walkthroughs, what they should be looking for on a daily basis, and then how are they providing that feedback and coaching to their staff? When we go out together as a team, we too are taking a look at that. And so we may not look at it specifically down to a classroom teacher level. We're looking at across the district to kind of say, where are we as a district in terms of making sure that gradual release is taking place, explicit instruction taking place, that student practice? And I will say this last walkthrough that we went on is the use of the materials, okay? And so what we are finding is that we are seeing pockets of where teachers are absolutely using the materials. We are finding that teachers are using other resources that align with the curriculum and then we are finding where there's some teachers who weren't using the resources at all, right? And so again, being mindful that, you know, we purchased the curriculum over the summer, we rolled it out in the beginning of the year. We do want to allow grades for our teachers to become familiar with the curriculum and within the materials, but we have to provide that feedback to kind of say where we are as a district and where we need to go in order to move forward. So that's some of the type of data that we are seeing. And I will also say to preservation of time, right? So if we're saying that we are now moving to a hundred and twenty minutes, you know, for ELA or ninety minutes for mathematics, is that happening? And so sometimes I will say when we've done our walkthroughs, we will get there at the start of maybe the ELA block. And is it starting on time at nine fifteen? And if it's not, then what's happening during that time? Is it that attendance has taken place or other things have taken place? So then we have to have that conversation, are all those routines and procedures in place so that we can begin in, in, you know, on time? So those are just some of the things that we take a look at. But all of the information that we collect is for our team to then kind of go back and talk about what type of professional development we need to have or conversation we need to have with our building principals about moving forward.
Again, I'm sure I'll have more questions based on some of those answers and looking at this. And I would definitely like to see, again, the breakdown of all the individual schools, especially with the data and, and with the baseline.
Absolutely.
So, but again, going back through, I guess, to, this was one of the concerns when we talked about having and implementing a new instru, the new curriculum, was we sort of put a little bit of professional development out there for our teachers. However, I know in the past, and I've had this conversation was in the past, we have done it where it was the guides, those things were already set up. So is that what is, we are moving towards now? Is that, that's what you're telling me? Is that we're moving, so we would have guides for the teachers to be able to follow? So they had outside resources that they could utilize, they had the resources of what would be in the books? Those are, we're basing that now? Is that, that's what we're going towards is the goal for this year and going forward?
Yes, and, and as not to overwhelm our teaching staff at the beginning of the year with a do-this-by-then type atmosphere. We wanted to allow the teachers that flexibility in moving into the new materials and the timeliness of that to then building those, those structures, right? So identifying specific units from the series that teachers should be utilizing with a specific timeframe from which to do that. What we didn't want to do is to, while they're being provided with professional development regarding the instructional model and implementation, to then be provided with, on Thursday, September twenty-third, you shall be completed with unit two, three, and four. So in, you know, change process is something that we focused a lot of time and attention on, very intentional about that change process and identifying that with our principals in terms of providing teacher support. But yes, you're absolutely correct in that we are working on those specific documents now to ensure that there is more fidelity, but also that we're understanding and providing grace to our professionals who are, you know, somewhat overwhelmed or were over, more overwhelmed at the beginning of the school year with the adoption of these new materials.
Sorry, Mike, can you say that again, that we are? Did you say we are being very specific on what they should be doing at what point?
We are building, right, those, those scope and sequence documents that refer to where they should be in terms of pacing. So right now, their units have been written on skills and there's lots of flexibility over the last couple of years in terms of the resources they use to teach those skills. So that now we're getting back to something that's a little more routine in terms of the skills and its, its connection to the gradual release model and then how the skills are built throughout the course of the year. We're going to be more strategic in how we lay those out for our staff members moving forward in twenty-five, twenty-six. Right now, we are still providing much flexibility to those, but we are strongly encouraging the use of these materials versus some of the things that have snuck in, so to speak, over the past. And that's because the philosophy was slightly different in terms of our approach. We were very specific. We went away from a little of that specificity to provide more of the teacher opportunity to find some of those materials. And now we're moving, moving back to making sure that the teachers have kind of that guide in terms of that process as they progress throughout the course of the school year.
I'll make my comment then.
So what I will say is the goal of the district is that, that we have a standalone curriculum and the materials that are used are regardless. What often happens is we buy a series and that becomes the bible of the work that is happening. And what is very critical to our district and all districts is that there is a scope and sequence, not necessarily a pacing guide or a schedule like you might be thinking about, but a scope and sequence of skills and sco, and concepts that need to be taught at each grade level that scaffold upon each other to get to a desired understanding. And those are in place but yet being tweaked as we go along, in part based on the materials that we chose to use to be that resource to support the curriculum. But should any of these resources go away, should wonders go away, should savas go away, our, our curriculum is standalone and should be standalone based on best practices, science of reading, math, you know, so on and so forth, that our students wouldn't skip a beat regardless of what we're teaching. I think we're still in that process of developing those best practices with our teachers, but also mirroring it to the materials that we chose to use as the resources for them to get to that end game.
Okay, because I guess that was partially what I was asking is we're utilizing these, what we're giving, but there's many tools out there. So are we allowing our teachers the autonomy to be able to utilize some of those things that are out there to be able to incorporate it in with our curriculum and the, the books that we have purchased?
And so what I will say is that in the beginning of the school year, that autonomy was given to teachers to be able to use whatever resources that are out there. Now that we have this curriculum, we are asking for them and they have, probably haven't had enough time yet to look at all of the resources that are available within the curriculum that we purchased. And so therefore, we may, we might be able to eliminate the duplica, duplication of materials, packets and so forth that teachers do, which also takes up additional time if they, if the resources are available, right, in the program that, that we purchased. So at this point in time, from now to the beginning of the year, I mean, the end of the year, we do want teachers to, to take a little bit more time to take a look, take a closer look at those resources to see what's available. And we may find that some of the resources that they might have been going towards might be right there embedded within the program.
So then I'm going to go back to the question of if they don't find that it's getting across to their students, what resources do they have if they don't find that there's something in there? Do they have the ability to be able to go and teach their kids based on something that they find?
If it is aligned with the curriculum and with the skills in which should be taught, then I would say yes. And I would say, I would still encourage the, you know.
I have no problems encouraging. I just don't want to take, you know, we have teachers and they're professionals and I want to make sure that we're giving them the opportunity to do what they were also brought to do and to not limit because, you know, I just want to make sure we're not sticking them in a box.
Understood.
So that's part of my concern, but thank you.
Yeah, these are all tricky conversations, particularly when you're taking on a lot of new resources all at one time, which we did while the money was available to us. The bottom line is we want our professionals to be professionals, but there is a very specific scope and sequence of skills and concepts that need to be taught and learned. And they, they vary from grade level to grade level based on a lot of factors from K through twelve. And we purchased materials that were quite extensive because we knew that they aligned to the skills that we wanted taught. So we are looking for an honest and earnest use of those materials. But as you stated, when they find that individuals aren't being successful based on the materials that they're using or the strategy in which they chose, then there's opportunity to shift for those individuals. But first and foremost, they should be looking at the resources provided to them because they were chosen for very specific alignment to what we were developing. But we're never going to pigeonhole somebody into only that. What is not acceptable is for somebody to couch that on their shelf and say, I'm not going to look at that at all. There's an expectation that they use those resources, look at them to see the value and alignment, and then individually for their groups within their class, make the decision of what is the best resource for that particular child or group.
And then if I could ask a follow-up to that, I guess, if ultimately we're moving towards a guide, then what we're looking at is a set of resources for teachers to use that are known to all of the teachers who are teaching that same material. And so it would be a collection, including the textbook, as well as, you know, other resources that are going to be cataloged, let's say. And so it, it will allow for, like, let's say, you know, tenth grade literature, whatever. There's, you know, the materials in the textbook, but there's also three or four novels that generally are taught, but an individual teacher can decide, well, this is the one I'm going to do this year. Somebody else might choose a different novel to do that same year, but there's, you know, they're still available and known to everyone to be able to use.
So this will be one of the main things as far as the professional development, is the gr, the guides?
Yes, and I would, and I will say that Ms. Hilton and Mr. Cox have already been working with coordinators to kind of take a look at the frameworks and those resources and what's already, was already placed in EduPlan to kind of make that alignment and to have those conversations.
I, I have a request for the end-of-year review. Is it possible to have a column showing last year's numbers? Because I just want to, I, I would like to see a comparison so we know, you know, how we're doing.
At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Couples and Ms. Andrew Bell to come forward to provide a presentation on their kindergarten Acadians data.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Bell. I'm an educational consultant with the Pennsylvania Training and Technical Assistance Network, PATN, where oftentimes referred to as the training arm of the Bureau of Special Education. For many years, PATN has applied for and received state personnel development grants that provide professional development and support to districts who come on to the work of the grants that we have. We are currently in a grant that we have titled SPEL that stands for Success for PA Early Learners. And the goal of SPEL, one of the goals, is to ensure that students who are at risk for or identified with a delay or disability have access to evidence-based practices to improve their literacy outcomes. Schools that come on to this work are required to implement enhanced core reading instruction that are instructional routines that are explicit and systematic, that provide that systematic instruction that align with the core program that the teachers are using in their elementary buildings. In reviewing the components of the grant, the requirements with Dr. Draper, we said, would Easton be willing to bring on a site to this work? And Paxenosa came on to this work with us. So ECRE is rolled out one grade level at a time through the three years of the grant. So it starts with kindergarten this year, first grade next year, second grade the following year. So kindergarten teachers at Paxenosa, along with staff who provide interventions to kindergarten, have been engaged in professional development and customized classroom coaching so that they are able to implement these instructional routines with fidelity, with the support of IU consultants and myself to provide that implementation well. So how are things going so far? We have been really pleased with the teachers implementing this work. These teachers have made a difference in a very short amount of time. They've been open, they've been committed, and they've been fearless, and I just couldn't be more pleased. So I thank you for the opportunity to work with the administrators at Paxenosa as well as these committed teachers and students. It's been a pleasure. And I will toss it to Mr. Couples so he can talk more specifically about what's been happening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. And thank you, Andrew, for, for all that information. It's a pleasure being here and able to speak upon some of the successes that we've had at Paxenosa, but specifically take a look at our kindergarten data through our ECRE Enhanced Reading Core Instruction. As Andrew said, our kindergarten staff has just been phenomenal taking this on as Dr. Draper came to me late last spring and we discussed this opportunity that we had and we dove, dove straight in headfirst. Our kindergarten staff with Ms. McQueen, Ms. McNeil, Ms. Market, Ms. Sel and Ms. Bab have just been phenomenal thus far, getting trained at the beginning of the year in September and really starting to implement ECRE in October. So this is a short few months of work and the fruits of their labor are definitely paying off through some of the data that we're going to take a look at. So the first couple of slides, just kind of give a background about, a little bit more about Enhanced Core Reading Instruction and as we mentioned, some of the things that you'll see with our data and our Acadients was mentioned by Ms. Hilton, and also alignment to our Wonders Core Curriculum Program. So evidence-based program, tiered approach, designed to ensure high-quality reading instruction for all of our students, as we mentioned, this year specifically in kindergarten. Focus is on providing effective core reading practices with additional support for students who need it. As Andrew mentioned, we do have other staff members trained as well, other than our kindergarten staff, in which we are beginning to provide some intervention supports for those students who we found to be in need of, and we're going to continue to do so as we move along this process. So ECRE aims to address the needs of all learners, ensuring that reading instruction is rigorous, inclusive, and accessible for all. So three main components here that I pulled out, strong core instruction. So, you know, a focus of us, not just within Paxenosa, but within our district, focusing on improvement of our core reading instruction, again, aligned with Wonders. Targeted support for our small group instruction, as has been mentioned previously, and progress monitoring. So regular assessment of students' progress, identifying areas for improvement, and then also always looking at our data, which we'll take a look at in a second here. So just some of those components to, to make mention of. So just some of those components to, to make mention of. So key features, another word that was used here throughout the evening thus far, the importance of explicit instruction, modeling reading strategies clearly for all students, systematic approach, sequence that builds on previously learned skills, frequent practice, and then differentiation. It is a very structured, routine-based instructional practices for our students, for our teachers. So there was a lot for our teachers to learn, a little bit of time, and, and implement this in the classroom. So some of the benefits that we're seeing already and hope to continue to see as we move forward, improved literacy outcomes, every student receiving the right amount of support to meet their potential, identifying those students who may be struggling, and providing those students with various forms of intervention, whether it be through a tier two and then a tier three, and then data-driven instruction. So teachers can adjust instruction based on those real-time student data. What I'll show here is just a short minute or so clip of some ECKRiE instruction taking place. This is actually one of our interventionist teachers, providing a tiered instruction with just two or three of the routines that they were trained in.
Yeah. Am. Yeah. All right, let's do some individual sounds. Let's listen to your name. Bella. Sh. App.
Chi.
Jakai. Yak.
Yeah.
Awesome job. All right, let me, good listening. Are we ready?
Yeah.
All right, let's go through our sounds now. Okay, ready? Card.
Piano.
Sound. Spelling.
P.
Card.
Sun.
Sound.
S.
Spelling.
S.
Card.
Apple.
Sound.
A.
Spelling.
A.
Who says A has a dot?
Card.
Turtle.
Sound. S. Spelling.
Key.
So again, that was, again, those were some students that were provided another tiered intervention, and it's the use of continuing those ECKRiE routines with those students who we felt were targeted and needed some additional supports. The next couple of slides, we'll take a look at are some of our, our goals and data, again, just through kindergarten and our Acadians data. As a ECKRiE core team, we do meet monthly, and one of the areas that we take a look at every month and discuss is our data points. So the blue was our beginning of the year data. The red, we had each individual teacher set goals for their middle-of-year data, and then the yellowish color there is their actual data from the middle-of-year goal. So you can just see per teacher how they individually set their goals and, and how those teachers, you know, are definitely meeting those goals at the middle of the year based off of their Acadians data. This data point here, we'll take a look at first sound fluency. So again, at the beginning of the year, we had 43% of students who were at that benchmark. We set a middle-of-year goal at 80%, so quite high, and we actually reached 79% of our students at the middle-of-year data. Next slide discusses the phoneme segmentation. There are just middle-of-year goals there for this piece of it. So we had our middle-of-year goal, and then our actual middle-of-year is at 83. We just set a goal as a group at 85, not really having a great idea about where this should be projected to, but we did feel that that is a goal that we should be able to meet, but will also challenge our students as well. This is a great slide here that just has the comparison from last year to the beginning of this year, middle of the year, and the use of ECKRiE in our, in our classrooms. You'll notice that last year, we had 85 students, and this year of 84, so the number of students is very comparable. The blue color is from 23, 24, and the red for this school year. You have the composite score, first sound fluency, phoneme seg, and the nonsense word fluency. The bottom will give you the exact numbers of students that met those, those goals. So, you know, you can see a great improvement from 56 to 66, 71 to 79, our phoneme seg 52 to 73, and then our nonsense word fluency 64 to 67. So that gives us a good comparison of where our kindergarten students were last year at this time compared to the group this year through ECKRiE.
Mr. Couples, I just want to interject. The, this, the data really excites me. If you could go back to that slide. The phoneme segmentation difference is really important to notice. If you'll see that that's over a 20-point increase, and if children can segment and blend and manipulate phonemes, they're ready for whole-word reading. So we couldn't say that about our kids at this time last year, well, 50% of them, but we can say that 75%, almost 75% of our kindergarteners at PAX are ready to read whole words based on that data. So the other bars aren't dramatically different. I mean, 10% is a lot, 8%, but 21% more kids are going to be reading, they're already reading whole words, and they're writing whole words. So I just wanted to point that out. There's other, there's a few other things I want to point out, but I'm just really excited for all.
Please do so. And we just actually met with our, our team last week, and we began to set our goals for the end of the year and really focused on students' reading, right? Whole words and multiple whole words by the end of the year. So that's our next steps as we move along in setting our end-of-year goals. So as was discussed earlier with Ms. Hilton, we, we're going to take a look at the Acadians pathways, and there's just a quick description of, of what that Acadians pathways is and what it measures, and as was discussed, based on reading progress relative to other students who started the year with similar initial skills. Take a look at the left there of the projection and the pathways that are color-coded, from well below typical to below typical. You have typical in green, and then the point of focus is at dark green, the above typical, and the well above typical, that is in blue. So we're going to take a look at each of those aspects and our students that are making that growth throughout those pathways. So some more data that, that should excite everyone, along with Ms. Hilton, Dr. Draper, right? As we've discussed, so. So again, just some other information here regarding the Acadians pathways of progress, establishing individual student progress monitoring, evaluating individual student progress and rate of growth, and reflecting on the effectiveness of our system and supports within our classrooms, teachers, and then within our building at Paxenosa. So something we are, once again, meeting tomorrow with our kindergarten staff and our intervention supports, to continue to have these discussions, and then identifying specific students in each specific area and what we can provide for those students in order to continue their growth. So the first one we'll take a look at is well below benchmark. So again, you can see the 45%, so 45%, 15 out of 33 of our kindergarten students who were well below in the red, right? Their pathways and their progress should be taking them to the dark green and the blue as we progress and move through, throughout the year. This is going to show the students who are in those yellow, all right? So 47%, so eight out of 17 of those students in the yellow that started off the beginning of the year, again, should be showing that dark green or to that blue, well above or above typical progress. 69% of our students, so a great number here, 11 out of 16, all right, who started the year in that green. So we're on benchmark, all right? So 70% of those students are progressing to continue to grow and get into that, those areas in that blue. So those students who were there, it's showing that they're going to continue to grow and move along the path that we want them to and not, right, scale backwards into maybe the light green or the yellow.
Mr. Couples knows this is where I want to interject. So this, this is really important also to highlight because we know when kids are coming in on benchmark, it's hard to move them. It, it's, it's good if we keep them where they are and we keep them in the green, but it's harder to move kids. And they have, that many kids, so 60% of their core kids are making above or well above typical progress. And if you go to the, or that's the blue kids. So these kids came in already above benchmark, and we have almost 60 of them making well above or, above or well above typical progress. That is very hard to do, and this is just with the explicit instruction being implemented in core since October. So about two months of explicit instruction and everything else that the teachers are doing, their art of teaching, the connections that they're making with the kids, everything, the culture at PAX, all of that factors in, but that's really, really commendable. So I really wanted to give a shout out for those, for those two key points.
Thank you. So in the long run, you know, ECKRiE's proven approach strengthens reading instruction, ensures all students can succeed. We are seeing that. Our goal is to provide every student with the tools they need to become proficient, confident readers, especially as they prepare to move on to first grade, and together we can make a lasting impact on literacy achievement. So I, it, it's just been a great experience thus far. As I said, our, our staff in kindergarten has just done a phenomenal job from the day one when we had these discussions about what this is, how does it work, what it looks like. I will say, the training at first is a bit intimidating, right? Because it is a lot. It's down to the second of, you know, providing wait time for our students, very explicit and very routine-based, and it's a lot to learn. So just can't commend that kindergarten staff enough for the job that they have done. And then the other staff members that we have on our core team, our intervention team, you know, when we meet monthly, and just the positive discussions that we have when it focuses on student achievement and data and where we can go. So just want to say thank you again for having us, you know, the opportunity to come here and discuss where we're at and where we hope to move forward. So thank you.
Mr. Couples, I want to thank you, you know, as the leader of that building. You were open to the change, you were open to the challenge, right? Knowing that it would probably be challenging and difficult, and also probably to change mindsets, you know, of people, right? But you stuck with it, you did it, you consistently gave the message of the importance of this work, and it certainly has paid off. So many thanks to you and also to Ms. Oswald as well, and your teachers, you know, for hanging in the air, for doing it, because the results are, are truly remarkable. And Andrew, I'd like to thank you so much for your partnership and also for coming out this evening to kind of share in this success, this success story with us. So thank you.
Thank you.
So one thing I'd like to highlight here, and, and Mr. Couple, Ms. Bell, thank you for all of your support and that of your teachers as well, but I think that top bullet is probably one of the most important highlights of the slide where it says "all students." And so I don't want to minimize or miss the opportunity to say, when we say "all students," we mean all students. So students who are achieving, you know, typically students who may have an IEP, a GIEP, ESL, you know, all students are captured within that data, and that's a really important distinction. We're not teasing out any subgroup. This is, this is the student body of Paxenosa and performing quite high. And we noticed this, you know, a few years back when we did step-by-step, it was a similar result at Paxenosa and some of our other schools where all students really found their feet in, in literature in particular and learned how to manipulate letters and words and sounds in order to become readers. And that was a game changer, as I'm sure it is now, when so often we have preconceived notions about kids are maybe capable of, particularly around socioeconomic demographic. You know, there's certainly, you know, research and reality out there that kids achieve to this, to the point that we set goals, and often if we only expect a minimal amount because of some extraneous factor, then that's all they achieve because that's all we expect of them. And so what this proves is when we have high expectations coupled with strong teaching, all kids, regardless of their demographic or regardless of their cognitive abilities, are able to pick up and learn and achieve at a commensurate rate. And so much to be celebrated there at Paxenosa. So great job. Thank you.
Just like to open the floor, any questions for Mr. Couples or Ms. Bell?
I, I have a question. Are the kindergarten parents aware that their students are a part of this program?
So I would, through our PTA meetings, we've had the conversations about the programming in the grant. I'm actually just updated the PTA as far as where our, our data is, this exact information here. So through the PTA, those conversations have been happening. So I would say through that process.
Okay. What I like about this program is that for the next two years, they're going to be following these kids. And so I guess the next question would be like, what do you think you do differently for your first grade and your second grade teachers, especially when you mentioned that, you know, the training can be a bit intimidating? You know, what are the lessons that you learned this year that you take into the next two years?
Yeah, I would say one of the roadblocks is, is the PD time, right? And Andrew and I have had many discussions about when do we have the staff trained? You know, training over the summer for staff is extremely difficult, as you can imagine. So that we had to come up with some other options. Training staff at the beginning of the year, having them out of the building for the two and a half days, right? Is, is challenging as well. So you have to kind of consider what's the best or the worst case with those options. So, and we have already had conversations about what the training looks like for first grade next year, as long as additional staff that we feel need to be trained, ESL staff, intervention staff, things like that. So it's really, I think, the big conversation for us right now is, is that specifically? And any other?
I just wanted to add in, I think for first grade, they have the great opportunity to go visit a kindergarten classroom and see it happening in kindergarten, because what happens with first grade teachers, they're trained next, the kids coming to them know what they're doing, and they're just learning the routine. So they want to feel comfortable about what does it sound like, look like, you know? And so we can model in the first grade classrooms with first grade students at the end of the year before they get the training, just to kind of give them a sense of that, and then they can also see it happening in kindergarten too, to get a sense of that. So that would be a couple of ideas.
So one of the, one of the interesting pieces, and it's not so apparent at Paxenosa, is this is similar to what we did a number of years ago with step-by-step and very explicit instruction. So any teacher who was around during that period of time have been trained on some of these similar skills. I think one of the things that they'll face at Paxenosa is certainly the skills change as kids become more proficient readers and, and decoders of letters and words, then the skills have to change as well. And so not only does the training take place, but also the training differen- differentiates based on now this new level of reader, because you're not teaching those under skills, they are, they're coming to you with them. The other challenge that Paxenosa faces is that Paxenosa often has a, has a turnover of staff where there's newer staff coming on board for a whole host of reasons. Right now, he has a grade level that's pretty sparse based on people growing their families. And so I think they're, they have one staff member who's the steady and, and they're relatively new at that. And so those are challenges of, for leadership to consider and teachers to mentor one another is how do we continue to grow our own in these, in these times that people are having their own lives and growing families and have circumstances that happen, because those skills are important, whether the teacher's there or not. And so one of the things that we often have to pay attention and quite frankly sometimes fall short on is those people who come in after the initial training has happened. So how do we keep that cyclical training for all staff as they turn over and/or just continue to grow themselves as professionals?
Thank you.
make you aware of the designation of our middle school becoming a Cascading CSI school. And so, yes, thank you, Gina. So there are some acronyms here. We have ATSI and CSI. The middle school was formally designated as an ATSI school, which is Additional Targeted Support and Improvement. They were designated by the state because there were subgroups that did not meet the threshold or the criteria, the statewide criteria. And those subgroups were Hispanic subgroup, students with disabilities, and then also economically disadvantaged. And so the middle school was designated as an ATSI school back in 2018. And so every four years or so, they take a look every four years or so, they take a look at that designation to see if those subgroups are ready to exit, have met the exit criteria. And so our middle school did not meet that exit criteria. And so what happens now at this point in time, what the state has decided to do is to cascade any schools who are Title I schools, receiving Title I funds, designated as ATSI to become a cascading CSI school. CSI standing for Comprehensive Support and Improvement. And so there are two designations. There is a regular CSI designation, and then there is a cascading CSI designation. The regular CSI designation are those schools Title I, receiving Title I funds, who did not meet the statewide criteria, and they have performed in the bottom 5% of the state. That is not our middle school. Our middle school only received this designation because they did not, their subgroups did not meet the designation by the end of last year. And so we are hoping that along with this designation, there will be additional funding that will be designated for those schools for school improvement efforts. We will have the support of our intermediate unit, and then also there may be some additional support from our state level to assist our school in meeting their goals. And so the next slide there, Gino, just some information for our board there to kind of show you the subgroups that were identified and where they performed in, from 2018 up until 23, 24, and the comparison with the statewide average, so that you have an idea of how those subgroups performed. And then in ELA, in the next slide also in mathematics. And so the next slide then will then show what needs to happen, and this is the planning timeline. And so the schools were designated, we had a meeting with Ms. Jones to kind of discuss this designation, what needs to happen place in terms of developing a steering committee that will come together, both a steering committee internal and external, to develop a school improvement plan, you know, for how we're going to ensure that these subgroups are growing and meet the criteria by the end of the four-year designation. And so this month, we're going to, she's going to be conducting some stakeholder surveys and focus groups, gather that data, and then continue to identify what are some root causes as to why, you know, the data looks the way that it is, create some goals, and then develop a plan. And it just kind of outlined there some of our next steps. And so again, communicating this designation with their families, also with staff. We're sharing it with you this evening with their school board meeting, and then Mrs. Jones, we're going to meet again to kind of determine who she would suggest be a part of the internal, external committee, have some suggestions there. And then we're going to select our planning meeting dates for the remainder of the year so that we can develop the plan together and provide support for her. The next slide just kind of shows that the state does provide opportunities for the building leaders to participate in, to, to get some more information and support on how they can conduct these certain sessions within their buildings, to help them kind of, you know, again, to, with the development of their plan. And that's where we are at this point. I know that was kind of fast, but just really wanted to kind of make you aware that the middle school is no longer an ATSI school, but they are now designated as a CSI school, and the reason why they were designated. Now, are there any questions?
I have a question. Are the leaders at the middle school encouraged, strongly encouraged to attend the the workshops that the state is providing?
Yes, so, yes, Ms. Jones has this information, and she, it was shared with her that she is absolutely more than welcome to have, to go to these sessions along with the team of people. But she was also informed that the IU will also come to the district as well and hold sessions with our team.
So as far as the planning timeline, is this more what Ms. Jones is handling?
We're doing it collectively together.
Okay. As far as the stakeholders and the surveys, and how is that being determined as far as who the stakeholders are, and how are the surveys being sent out and?
So that is something that we're, we're communicating with Elise about, how she, how we want to handle that. The IU did send some sample surveys that we could use to send out to families. And then also, we have to have a conversation about the focus groups in terms of who's going to be selected for that. So we want it to be a diverse group of people who are participating in the focus groups, and so we'll be meeting with her to have that conversation.
So when the information comes back and the gather and analysis data, who will be, that will also be collective, or is that also then going to be Ms. Jones that will be handling that?
No. So that information will come back to the steering committee. So this plan is very similar to what we did for the district-wide comprehensive plan, where we had a steering committee of about 40 people, both internal, external, and then, I mean, external committee of about 40 people, but we had an internal committee, which was primarily the, the CNI department. So it was going to be similar to that, where Ms. Jones will have an external committee, which will be, include parents, teachers, administrators, school board members, students. And then there's going to be an internal who's going to take the information from that external committee to kind of then analyze that data, have some further conversation, and develop some goals and bring back to the external committee.
Okay, so I guess my question then is, as far as people being involved, how is that going out to individuals of allowing them?
So it would be, it was going to be announced, it's going to, we're going to send out a notification to say this, and we'll ask, certainly, parents will be informed the same way we did with the district-wide committee to say that this is taking place. If there are anybody who's interested, community partners as well will be invited, and then school board members will be invited. So we're going to follow the same process that we did for the district comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you so much for your time this evening. We know that was a long one, but we certainly wanted to make sure that we provided the data and information to you at this time. So, but thank you for your attention. This concludes our report.
Thank you. Is there anyone to be public, to be heard, any public to be heard on academic agenda items? Seeing none. Okay, we'll move on to athletics. Dr. Bolts? Or Dr. Zadic, one of the two of you?
Item one, the agenda this evening, and it was reviewed by King Spry. Matt, you can certainly share the, the plan for JV to come back to Hackett Park, and everything that goes with that then.
Sure. You may remember for quite a few years, we played a baseball triple header at Hackett Park against Phillipsburg. Over the last couple of years, that field hadn't really been in the state we needed it to be in in order to play competitive high school baseball games, but they've done quite a bit of work in the city to improve the facility to the point where we'd like to move those games back over to Hackett Park this year. So just a letter, basically agreeing to that. And then just so everyone's aware, we will continue to hold the varsity game at Coca-Cola Park this year and hopefully for years into the future. So.
Any questions on that? Okay. Is there any public to be heard on athletic agenda items? Okay, seeing none. I guess that'll get moved then to the next meeting. Okay, next we have budget and finance, Mr. Trent.
Yes, excuse me, the business office has two items for approval at the next meeting. The first is a food service equipment purchase for a freezer door at Eastern, at the high school. The total price of that will be $7,300. And then the other motion is for a new student activity account for a book club at the high school. That's all.
Anyone have any questions on that? Okay. Is there any public to be heard on budget and finance agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, those will get moved to the next meeting. Okay, next we have buildings, ground, safety and security, Dr. Zadic.
Thank you, Ms. Hess, and good evening, everyone. Tonight we have quite a few things to present to you as, as a board of directors. Mainly two items of interest. We do have Andrew Mater here this evening, who will be providing an update to our capital improvement plan, and we will share that momentarily. But before we do that, Andrew, we're going to take some time and talk about our transportation department. This evening, we have Mr. Bernhardt here, who has been with us before, presenting probably two months ago. Ben has been asked to do a deep dive into the transportation department, as all of you are aware. And through that deep dive, we have sat together as a team and really taken a look at how to improve the department over the next three to five years and where we want to ultimately be. Within that goal-setting process, there are a few things that have been identified as critical, you know, as we would identify as a high priority on our own capital improvement plan. It's identical, the identical process that we're undertaking here in transportation. So Ben is going to do some presentation this evening that's going to encompass departmental updates and also letters B, C, and D in the agenda this evening. So all of those are going to be wrapped into the slide presentation. And then Dr. Schultz and Mr. Malley will also kind of jump in as necessary into the conversation. Ben, first off, I just want to recognize, thank you for being here. I know you are very much not feeling well, and did let you know that you did not need to be here this evening, but you felt it was one of those critical evenings to be here. So thank you, and I appreciate that, and want to certainly bounce this over to you. So a lot of good information within the slides, but we'll, you'll take some questions at the end. And then Ben, I would just ask maybe before bus patrol, we just stop and answer any questions for the previous three items. Okay?
Well, thank you. I'm here tonight to talk about safety, security, and service. As I review our department, that's what I feel the triple S's are very important and what I strive for. So let's go to the next slide, Gino. Okay, the three S's. The transportation department has identified some major gaps in the three S's, safety, security, and service. To improve the departmental operations and to provide the safest and most efficient pupil transportation possible, several core items have been identified as needing immediate attention. These core items are being presented to the school board with the knowledge they need to make an educated decision. So we'll be talking about radios tonight, cameras, and a wheelchair accessible school bus. Move on. So the first thing, let's talk about communications changing from analog to digital radios. Okay, our three current system hinders the three S's. We currently have poor sound quality, poor geographical coverage, outdated technology. Equipment is no longer made. We only have one channel available for communication. It lacks accountability, lacks emergency features, lacks working equipment, and the system is currently between 16 and 17 years old already. So, we tested two different systems, our current provider, we tested a system, and we tested radios from two-way communication. How we tested these systems, we actually got a radio, we put it in a bus, and we actually drove around with it with students on board, got feedback from drivers. And as well as then, we also tested geographical areas by actually going out and driving to some remote locations and saying, can you hear me now? So let's move on to the next slide there. So the new digital systems proposing will have two channels. We'll have a direct channel for operations and a direct channel for mechanic or emergencies. This is one thing that is very important as if a bus breaks down, you know, the mechanics need to be able to communicate for while they push and pull the bus without interfering with our normal operations. Usually a bus breaks down right in the middle of a route. And you know, we have 75 other school buses on the road. They need to be able to communicate. Direct-to-direct channel, which is very nice if you go out on a field trip. We have eight buses going to Westchester for a marching band, and those buses can talk to another as long as they're within a reasonable distance from each other. Enhances safety features. Vehicle ID will be visible on the radios. So everyone in the district will actually, all the drivers will know who is actually talking on the radio. And private conversations can be possible. Right now, with the one channel, if we have an issue with a student, everyone hears that conversation. There is no privacy in that conversation. So the current system does not have all these features. So when I said we test it, we went out, current provider, sound quality was good. The coverage was excellent. Proposed dispatch system uses a VPN. The possible communication issues of power internet goes down. They're proposing to reuse our existing parts. Proposal includes Motorola XPR 2500. The proposal did not include handhelds. Safety features are good, lower initial investment, but more expensive over the long run. The two-way, the sound quality was excellent. I put it up actually to our drivers to actually let me know what they thought. One driver, actually, I was 53 miles away, and the driver made a comment, it sounded like I was standing right next to them. Proposed dispatch system uses base stations and handheld radios. There's no communication irreparative if power goes out. They're proposing to use all new parts. Remember, some of our wiring is 16, 17 years old. Proposed to includes Motorola XPR 5550E radios. These radios feature a high-power audio amplifier. These radios deliver loud, clear speech with backline noise cancellation for better intelligent, intelligibility. Their rugged, durable design for everyday use. Another nice feature about them, they have large LED screens that are easily seen. Their enhanced audio quality, and if we ever want to move to GPS using the radios, they're GPS compatible as well. Proposal includes six handheld radios. The safety features are excellent, high initial investment, but less expensive over the long run.
Matt, can I ask you a really quick question, just to kind of put us all on the same page here? When you talk about the proposal including a different radio itself and then six handhelds, I know you were really intent on the 5550. I know we asked for that model across the board, but the, the proposals were not, I'll say apples to apples in that regard. What is so important about the model that you're requesting of the 5550, just so that we understand?
Okay, well, the, the sound quality, that it does contain that high-power amplifier. It has a larger LED screen that's easy to read. And that, it has that noise cancellation feature. So it does produce a better quality sound. And, and right now, we do have a lot of drivers that are constantly getting on the radio and asking, can you repeat that? So this was, hopefully, prevent that from, from occurring in the future, that the drivers can hear clear communications the very first time.
Appreciate that. And then the handheld radios, just because it's different in the proposals, what, what are they, what is their purpose, who would be having those, and why is that important to you?
Okay. Well, the proposal from two-way with the six handheld radios, they're actually a R7 model, which actually have a large LED screen, and they actually have roaming capacity, so they can pick up from any tower that is in our network. So if we would give it to a, say, on a field trip, we're going to Strasburg, if we would give it to a teacher, they could actually take that radio, communicate with the bus driver, because it does have that roaming capacity. And we're also use the handhelds for dispatching versus using the proposed system of the telephone-type system. All right, we'll move on to the next slide. This is where I really feel is beneficial for a, a new digital radio system, a new security feature. As an enhancement for drivers and student safety, the new radios will include a panic alarm. This will allow drivers to quickly trigger alert to supervisor radios of an incident on the bus. So all they have to do is hit a button, and it will send an alert to administrator radios, whoever you program them to. You can program the radios then for the microphone to be turned on remotely for one minute after they hit the button, which is very nice. You can listen in on the bus. You can- You can know what's going on. If it's a true emergency, sometimes they don't, they won't have the option to actually grabbing the mic and keying up. Okay? The new technology will allow for one-on-one conversation, preserving the privacy of the emergency, as more importantly, the names of the students involved. Current provider has a panic alert button on the radio, while two-way communication proposes installing a separate panic alert button, which would be mounted to the left of the driver. So anyone knows, you know, you're sitting in your car, your radio is here, your right hand. You know, sometimes if there is a true emergency, you know, you might be able to reach your radio, but a little button drift to your left would be quite easy to hit. Okay, we'll move on. So pricing-wise, we got CoStar prices. Okay, so the current provider, 100, we'll go there. You see the 100, XPR 2500 installation using existing wires and antenna as a price. Two-way proposed that we get a couple extra radios. At the moment, they gave a price for the XP 5550s there. In the current provider, two base stations, two base stations for two-way communications. One of the major difference in that base station is, one of them is actually for the garage with a large horn speaker from the two-way proposal because it gets rather noisy in the garage. That way, the garage can hear. With the current provider, their current dispatching system, you see a price there. That would be replaced by the six R7 handheld radios on the two-way communication. We give you a total price there. But one thing, this was done off of the October 28, 2024 proposal from our current provider. At that time, the digital yearly access fee was $46,200, while two-way communication has proposed $25,960 per year for our digital access. Just in case the board would like to know, we are currently paying $29,052 a year for digital access. So that actually is a significant reduction from what we're currently paying. So if you would add some components back in, say, we wanted to go with the new wiring, the new antennas. You know, we want a system that will make us another 20 years, you know? It would be a $75 fee from our current provider to get the kit, and I could not get a total labor estimate, what it would cost for that. Basically, they just said it was $95 an hour to install. So if you just add two to three hours per vehicle, you're talking an additional, talking additional right there, you know, about $30,000 to use new parts. And then you're also additional $25,000 to upgrade to the XPR 550 radios, which is the radios that I'm recommending. And if you would want to get a 10-ish additional radios. And that's why that's so important. If we grow the fleet, we have the radios already. Two, radios do go bad, they need servicing. So it's really nice to have extra radios. All you have to do is go out to the vehicle, unscrew it, screw the new one in, send the older one off to get repaired, and you have no downtime on communications. And then, you know, separating that safety feature from the radio over to your left hand. I do not know a price on that. And to add the six handhelds that, from our current provider, they gave us a quote of $5,580. However, they quoted for the 3500 model, which does not have the roaming capacity and a smaller digital screen. And I am told from my research that actually Motorola is discontinuing that model. So that's why I would recommend going with two-way for all those reasons. So let's move to the next slide. Just want to let everyone know, in case we ever do get a tariff warning, these radios' prices could be affected by the tariff warning. All right, let's move. Reality, yep. All right, so my recommendation is two-way communications. Excellent sound college quality, excellent coverage, excellent safety feature, proposed high-grade equipment, less cost over the long haul. If you just take the savings that was quoted in the October 24 yearly fee, within three years, the system will actually pay for itself. It's recommended by first responders. The Easton Emergency Squad recommended two-way, as well as Lafayette College. So I went out and actually did some research and actually got people's feedbacks, as well as it's recommended by the Colonial IU. We can move to the next slide. And here from Brittany Williams at the Colonial IU, we have been using two-way for approximately two years now. So far, we had no issues with the system. Has been a major improvement from the system we had before. We do not have any dead zones, radios have clear transmission, and their customer service is excellent. I highly recommend them. And again, like I said, we did get recommendations from Easton Emergency Services and Wells Lafayette College. So that's the radio portion. Let's move into video surveillance for our school vans. We all know that we have bus patrol for the school buses, but we do not have any video systems for our vans because they do not have REDs. So therefore, bus patrol will not do that. So the lack of the system hinders the three S's. Currently, there is no video surveillance. Our vans transport students with behavior issues. Vans transport students that were removed from regular buses due to their behavior issues. Vans transport special education students with IEPs and 404 plans. The lack of surveillance affords no protection for students or driver, and also vans lack GPS or driver monitoring. So I'm recommending a system from Surveillance 247, digital video systems. The cameras record drivers and passenger. They're high-definition picture and sound. It's really easy software to use. There is no download delays. Currently, our principals sometimes get a little frustrated with bus patrol. It takes approximately 45 minutes to download one video and then a 45 minutes to upload a video. So we're looking about an hour and a half for one video. And if our department gets eight to 10 requests a day, that's basically, you need a full-time employee just to pull videos for bus patrol. With this system, they work on a high-resolution data card where you can actually have extras. So all you could do is just pop it out of the system, put a new SD card in, and you could deliver that SD card to the principal. They can watch whatever they want. When they're done with it, return it, and then you just pop it in for the next time. So it's basically going back and forth. There's no delays, which is really nice. Again, also, this system has non-live GPS, which means is, one, you're actually watching it. You can actually have a little map come up, and it will actually show you where your vehicle was, how fast it was going. And you can actually add two additional parameters to it, such as if we want to know the driver hit the brake, we could actually, the DVR would record that, record the speed, the brake, and any of that other activity if you want to program it. Familiar with their product, and I would recommend it. So the system price, what are we looking at? A Zeus four-channel, 1080 DPR DVR with all this included installation, event marker. Again, what this will have, it's not so much of a panic button like I described, but if there's an event that occurred, the driver can hit a little button. It will automatically mark the film. So it's much easier to find. You can go right to that incident. You're looking at $1,636 per vehicle, or for our seven vans, $11,452. All right, let's move to the next slide. So big question is funding. How we're going to fund the radios and cameras? Capital will come from funds that are still available from the Palmer Elementary Fund. All right, let's, we'll move to the next one. So this one, wheelchair-assessable school bus. I'm going to do this presentation along with Dr. Schultz. So I will start out and explain why a wheelchair is needed. It greatly improves in-house service. It can be utilized for all grade levels. Can be utilized on field trips. Inclusive opportunities for students. District contracts this service out to Colonial IU's or other providers. So during the summer, we do have a member of the marching band, had to get to marching band, practice. We transported them over to middle school. We actually had to isolate this student, contract that out, and they were transported signaling. Also, recently, we had a student at the high school who was temporarily in a wheelchair for 15 days just for us to contract that out. Was $295 a day or $4,425 for just those 15 days. That's approximately $53,000 a year if we would contract that service out. Costs would have been more if multiple schools were serviced. That's just servicing one school. And over time, in-house operation savings would pay for the vehicle.
So we explored two different style vehicles. One was a minibus, and then the other one was a three-quarter bus. So we'll talk a little bit about the differences in these two vehicles. There's the minibus. And then the next slide is the larger bus, the three-quarter bus. So we did a compare and contrast chart, if you wanted to switch to the next. And we looked at different types of engines, the utility, and then what's the same about these vehicles. I'm not going to read all of these, but the main point here is that the smaller minibus is able to seat approximately 27 total seats without wheelchairs. The larger bus is able to seat 54 total seats without wheelchairs. The smaller bus is able to have a maximum of five wheelchairs, and then the larger one can have up to nine wheelchairs. And if you think about that, that could be potentially an entire, one whole classroom of students who have wheelchairs as their mobility. If you go to the next slide. We highlighted the ones that we thought were of benefit for each of these. The geographical locations, the minibus is a little bit easier to navigate through geographic areas. The larger bus can be more difficult in urban areas due to the width of the streets. Just some other uses, as you can see, we did highlight in green the larger bus for field trips that can fit approximately two classrooms, serve several students who are in wheelchairs, and then also have their typical peers with them as well. So it does support that full inclusion opportunity for our students. And the example that Ben gave for any extracurriculars where students are engaging in those activities, they'll be able to go with their typical peers. We also, and this is something that Ben told me, was that they have better vision for when they're able to drive that vehicle, as opposed to the smaller minibus. I guess there's a bunch of blind spots in that. So of course, it's cost prohibitive for the larger vehicle. But if we go to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about what we decided. So we did decide that the larger bus has greater benefits for our students. We're able to get several classrooms of students in there, transport larger groups, as well as have, right now, we have funds available to be able to pay for this in a couple different places. Want me to keep going, Ben? Do you want to finish up?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. All right, so we'll finish up. I'll let Ben finish up this part here.
All right, so big question, how we're going to fund the wheelchair access bus at $146,125. Well, $29,000 is from insurance funds from van 110 that was totaled last year right on Bushkill and Art Road. So we have that insurance money that just arrived. $5,000 from capital replacement funds in the transportation department. I still have that available in the budget. Approximately $1,825 in funds from scrapping two buses, some of the buses that we no longer need it. And then $110,300 from access funds to get to our total amount for the purchase, the bus. All right, any questions or comments?
All right, first of all, thanks, Ben. That was great. I think these recommendations are needed, but I do have a couple of questions. Gino, I don't know if you can go back to that, to the radios and the cost comparison? One question I have is if it's CoStar's pricing, why weren't we getting prices or are they providing prices on the same thing? Like, you wanted that radio, why didn't the current provider give a price? If they're CoStars, they should be able to give a price on this current radios on what you asked for.
I asked for the XP 5550, and when they did the proposal, that's what the proposal came in at.
So they don't have a CoStar's pricing for the radio you asked for?
They do. That's what the extra, the $25,000 would be. They did give me the price to upgrade to that radio.
So they would add $25,000?
Yes.
But if it's CoStar pricing, so they were that much higher than two-way? 141 to the, that would have been 146, okay. Right, am I looking at that right?
Yes, you're looking at that, yes.
Okay. I just didn't know why, I don't know why. It's really not a comparison if we're not quoting apples to apples, in my mind. But I'm not saying to go. I mean, I have no problem with the recommendation. The wheelchair bus, again, great idea. When you're talking about, do we have drivers certified to drive it? Do we have, do we look into, is it additional liability? Are we anymore liable if something happens? You know, if the driver does something or not trained properly? Is it a different insurance rate being a wheelchair van? Like, have we looked into all of the legacy costs, so to speak, when we're doing this?
Have not looked into the insurance or contacted the insurance company to see if there would be an increase in the insurance for that.
Okay, I think we should have that information. And again, good suggestions, but I think we have to, as far as, you know, when you talk about transparency, all the costs associated with these purchases, I think, need to be talked about and proper comparisons. And the last question that I have, and the big one, is I'm really concerned. Did you talk to our bonding attorney, or anybody talk to the bonding attorney? I don't think we can use capital funds. Bond money for non-project? Who's they? Kevin Reed from Kingspry or? You have that in writing? I think we need our attorney. Ken is a, I mean, no offense, but Ken is a, just a finance consultant. And depending on when the original, how the original resolution was worded, and I think you're talking about that $10 million extra bond?
We are.
So that would have been a different wording, and if it's worded properly, then you can use that.
Yeah, Mike, that's what we'd have to look at. The original resolution will, in bond, is typically specific to a project. There might be some language that refers to other capital projects with leftover. But then there's usually a lifetime span that those other capital projects have to satisfy in order to count for that. I'm not even sure, frankly, if communications and video would qualify as a capital project.
When you say capital project?
We can certainly look into. I don't know who did the actual bond work, but if it's some, we can certainly look at the resolution.
Through Ken Phillips, the inquiry, I'll correct myself. Was it through Mike Stravera, who I believe did put it in writing to me, but we can circle back to that.
So was Kevin Reed from Kingspry involved in it? So was it a bond or was it a note?
So I'll have to, I'll have to get a little more information.
Okay, yeah.
I'll have to get a little more information. I'll have to get a little more information on that.
Okay. All right. And when you talk about the access, again, you've got to pick your priorities. We know, we already talked last meeting about $500,000 short for the iPad lease. So what was the access funds designated for before you got to this stage? And we need to think about what we're not going to do, that we said we were going to do. But I mean, I think they're all, the radio system, you know, we need it, the availability for the wheelchair van for the students, those outside transportation companies are killers. And, you know, just think about the priorities and where, what you're not going to do that you said you were going to do with that access money and so on. But I'm really concerned about that bond money, making sure that we're okay.
I'll follow up on that.
Okay, so Mike has most of my questions answered. But I, for the maintenance plan for the radios, what all is included in that? So I know that was more of an optional thing. So like, is that, you know, like, we're talking about if something happens to it, you know, you drop your phone, your iPhone, you got the insurance plan, you pay a deductible and get a new one, is that, so I guess I'm sort of curious to know what that is. Also, understanding first year for that plan would be $285,320, and then I just want to make sure that the ongoing could either be the $25,000 or $36,000, depending on whether we do the maintenance. And with that, could we do a, if we're doing that, can we do a multi-year contract to maybe get reduced pricing or at least have a consistent pricing for budgeting purposes?
I can check into about a multi, if we wanted to go with that option, I could look into getting a multi-year contract to reduce that price. I do not know that answer, but that is something I can find out for you.
Yeah, I'd just be curious to see what kind of pricing we could get for that, if we decide that, and whether we are doing the optional maintenance program or not. And then I guess my other question sort of leads off with Mike's is, for the vans, do they need the CDL? And actually, I guess that would be part of my question, is who is loading the students? Is that, you know, the concern of that portion of it?
Yeah, well, the wheelchair bus, no matter what, the microbus or the three-quarter bus, you would need a CDL for. And then, so, I mean, that would be part of their training. We do train a little bit about special needs. It's required by the state to get your CDL. Then it would be additional training on tie-down points, exactly where you put the Q-strap tie-downs on a wheelchair, how to turn it down, emergency evacuation, you know, what do you do? So all that is extra training for the driver that would be assigned to that bus, yes.
Yeah, I think there's a certification besides just a CDL extra training that needs to be involved with that, so you can look into that.
Does anyone else have any questions? Nope, thank you.
So, we have all these questions. What's the timing? Like, when were you looking to have this approval?
It's up to you, Ben. So, yeah, Mike, so great question. So, you know, when we looked at this, we've been talking about this probably for about four months now, you know, internally. The reason why we decided to bring it to this meeting was because ideally, if we, if it would be recommended and approved at the February meeting, that would allow the time for us to integrate that over the summer, the lead times, overtime, installation time, we could start the year with that. If we back it up a month, which we may have to do, it will probably have a minimal impact, but it's nothing long-term that we're extremely concerned about. But it may end up not, we won't start the year in full.
We only have a week.
Right, so what, yeah, so what we'll do is we'll get all those answers to those questions that all of you asked. We'll share it out. If for some reason, everything is answered very, you know, easily and it's all good to go, we'll, I'll update you. If not, then we'll just put it back on the March agenda for the discussion and approval. But we'll get all those answers for you and then provide that to the board.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Ben, anything extra for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay on that piece? Okay, so, Ben, thank you very much. I know you're going to maybe jump in here as well. The next slide, Gene, if you can go there. We wanted to take an opportunity to provide the board with an update on Bus Patrol. So, you know, as, I think about two years ago, we entered into a contract with Bus Patrol. There's been some slowdowns there with some legalities and, you know, there's been, you know, kind of touch and go, but we are in full, full-go mode right now. I've asked John Romali to be here and Ben to provide some updates to some numbers, to some areas of concern, and just an overall update for the board directors in our community. So, John, if you wouldn't mind kind of kicking it off, and then we'll take some questions at the end?
Certainly. So, update on Bus Patrol from September 1st to, of 2024 through January 31st of this year. Next slide, please. So during that time, there has been 1,959 violations that have been sent to either the Easton Police, Forks Police, Palmer Police, or our school district police by Bus Patrol. Of those citation, or of those violations sent, 1,565 have been approved for citation by those departments. 394 have been disapproved for various reasons. Reasons for disapproval, you've had 340 where the vehicle was deemed unable to stop prior to the activation of the lights and the stop arm due to the distance it was from the bus at the time. 36 violations, the vehicle did not pass the bus. In other words, the driver was able to stop the vehicle prior to passing the bus. Eight violations, it was deemed that the driver's view was obstructed in some fashion, whether it be by roadway obstacle, you know, tree, stop sign, whatever the case may have been. Four violations were disapproved for improper stop-arm activations. Two were disapproved because the bus was still moving when the red lights and the stop-arm were activated. And three violations were disapproved for other reasons. Okay? Again, there's just caption or recap of the number of violations during that time period, the number that were approved for citation, sent to the driver, or should I correct that to the owner of the vehicle? So you're looking at about an 80% approval rate, 20% disapproval rate based on those figures. Time of day, we found that about 29% of our violations are occurring in the, during the AM run. 71% are occurring during a PM run. Day of the week, across the board, Monday through Friday, it's pretty much, it's even, no real variations to note. And some of our top locations, our top 10 locations for violations. If you take a look at those numbers and you guys would do the math, that amounts to about 50% of our violations or citations that were sent in those 10 stops.
So we're talking about the 248 between, like, what is that, CDS and?
The top three locations there on Route 248 pretty much go from the 25th Street Mall out to Park Avenue. That's that location.
So are they, are the buses on 248 in a dual line, or are they?
They're on 248. And it makes it difficult because it is a unique situation. 248 in that location is a four-lane roadway. It's not a divided four-lane roadway, so the oncoming vehicles in both lanes are required to stop.
The reason why I ask that, because I've seen a couple stops where they come like to a T in an intersection, and the bus is, the neighborhood is here, and the bus stops here, and the bus comes in that way, you don't, you can't see the reds.
And...
I bet you can't block the intersection.
I'm sorry?
I bet you can't block the intersection.
No, legally, they're not supposed to block the intersection, but by law, the vehicle is also not supposed to cross the intersection as well.
Let me chime in a little bit about that 248. I use this data then when designing routes. All of our stops on 248 are house stops. We're stopping actually at the student's house, and they're all door-side. So even, I've gone all the way out Nazareth Road. We do not have any students in our district crossing Nazareth Road at all. Even further out, when the road's a two-way road, because I look at this data and for the safety of our students, that's how I can use this data and say, okay, we really, this road, really, everything should be door-side. So we do have some, several buses that do actually drive around the block to make sure that all of our students are picked up on door-side on those streets that are high citation violations occur. And that's done for the safety of the students.
So I know we're only seeing the top 10 here, although I'm not sure how quickly they drop off. I mean, to me, having a more than a handful of citations at the same stop would indicate, you know, problems. So I, I'm sure it's a ton of work for you, but to take a look at those, anything that has, you know, more than your one or two off citations, I feel like, you know, would be a good, a good spot to reconsider, you know, where the actual stop is. I don't know if all of these, you know, I'm trying, the 100 block of North Ninth Street, what is going on there? I mean, why would that, I mean, that's just a traditional four-way stop, right? Like, why would there be so many?
Taking a look at that, that area of North Ninth Street, a lot of those violations occurred on Wood Avenue, which at that location is a downhill slope going down towards the Seventh Street intersection. So again, you know, when you look at a lot of these, as Ben indicated, yes, the 248 stops, four-lane highway, the bus is stopping in the far-right lane, you know, door-side to the students' residence. A lot of these are just plain driver ignorance that are causing these violations. Initially, my office was receiving a good amount of, if you want to say, complaints about receiving a citation in the mail for these violations. And oftentimes, the complaint was, I didn't know I had to stop. Maybe you better go take your driver's test again.
Yeah, I was just saying, Mrs. Hess, I venture to say that many of those citations on 248 are because people don't realize on that four-lane road, that they need to stop in both double lanes.
I think that contributes quite a bit to it, that on a four-lane road, they're thinking, well, if the bus is in the far-right lane, I don't have to stop. And again, you know, talking with Palmer Township about a number of these citations, almost, you know, I would say a good 95% of them are with the vehicles in that oncoming lane and even that far lane that they don't realize, yeah, you know what, it's not a divided highway here, I need to stop.
Although, no, now, does this show something? Have you written about it?
Well, I mean, Susan, that's a great point. Unfortunately, yeah, it's hidden in the wallet, but you know what? It's also gone through the community tremendously that, yeah, our buses have the cameras on, the citations are being sent, and I think people are far more aware than they were about a year and a half ago.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's a huge benefit of the Bus Patrol program, is having this data. And now, I mean, I hope, there's no one from the media here today, but I hope they all grab that slide, and I hope it gets on every neighborhood Facebook page also, so that people, that's part of it, is educating the public for the safety of our children. And, yeah, if you didn't know, you needed to stop on 248. Hopefully, you'll see this and realize that you do need to stop.
Next presentation, can you put pictures on the bars?
So, no, Mike, but in regard to the next presentation, in all seriousness, you know, this is our first, you know, attempt at the Bus Patrol presentation and giving the board an update. So I guess, you know, from the board of directors, is there any feedback that you can give us and something you would maybe prefer seeing next time, or additional information? Or is there any other information that you would've liked to see this evening that we could provide?
I am interested, not that it was missing tonight, but I am interested at the rate of collection on those citations?
Well, we don't take part in that, but just to give everybody a real quick, brief overview, what the state did approximately three years ago was they took a look at the statute that governs the violation of the bus's red light or stop-arm. And they took it out of the, if you want to say, the criminal form and put it into the civil form. So in other words, when I said that we were sending the citations to the vehicle driver, that's not the case. The cameras on the bus are reading the license plate, and the citation is sent to the vehicle owner for permitting the driver of the vehicle to create this violation. So in other words, basically what it comes down to is rather than in the criminal form where it is beyond a reasonable doubt, they've moved it into the civil form where it's a preponderance of the evidence, 51%. So if I get the citation in the mail and it says, you know, vehicle owned by John Romali passed the bus, and it shows a picture of my vehicle passing the bus, and I say, well, I wasn't driving it that day, that's not a defense. The next question would be asked, well, gee, Mr. Romali, who was driving your vehicle that day? Who did you permit use it or lend it to? So I can either perjure myself or pay the fine. And that's pretty much how the collection rate goes. Citation's not paid, it's sent to a collection agency. So it kind of got you coming and going, lack of a better way of putting it.
I think less necessarily information that I didn't see so much as what I would like to see the district now do with the data. Obviously, you know, we can make changes to our bus routes, but also if you look at some of these, like the 100 block of North Ninth Street, to then reach out to the Easton Police Department and say, hey, we're having a problem with this specific intersection. Can you do some targeted patrols during that, whatever, it's the AM or PM run, you know, so that we can, even just to set up with the flashing lights, to make people aware, you know, whatever the individual police departments feel, you know, is the best way to handle it. Again, just to try to reduce the number in those problem areas.
Well, and that's certainly something we can look at. I mean, the data that I was provided when I made the request for this presentation from Bus Patrol, each one of the agencies, Easton, Palmer, and Forks, and ourselves, are provided with this data on an annual basis at, you know, the end of the school year for, you know, data that was collected, citations issued, and everything through the course of that particular year. So again, they can make the adjustments as well. You can certainly make sure, you know, we're in communication with them to take a look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just thinking, you reminded me of something with that. I see in some areas, there's a place in Hanover Township near Anzos that has a, kind of a mockery kind of sign. It says, you know, stopping the stop sign free, coasting through $133 plus points or whatever like that. I was wondering if maybe the townships or anyone would consider that kind of attention-getting sign maybe in some of these high-risk, high-volume areas? Just, I'm thinking aloud, you know, people notice those signs, and I think the one in Jacksonville Road I'm thinking about, I think it might actually blink, really drawing attention to yourself. So when you see that, because it's, I know that intersection there, Jacksonville Road, I could see where that gets run a lot, but just something to think about out there, you know, that might be maybe a deterrent as well, because they're not going to send, you know, manpower, people power out there constantly just to watch people for doing that unless there is a super, you know, unless a safety issue really, really arises where people are getting hurt, which we haven't seen yet, luckily. But just thinking, you know, just thinking aloud out there, just as an idea.
Okay, and that's something too, especially along that route or that corridor on Route 248. That might be beneficial for some signage there, at least making the motorists aware that this is not a divided highway. I can talk with Chief Smith about that and see what maybe we can come up with.
Well, thanks. Thank you for the mention.
So Ben, I think, you know, when we interviewed, one of the things you did in your previous roles... and in previous places was very good at communicating your information out. So I would be happy to hear any suggestions you might have on how we can communicate that out to our school community and our other communities around. So if you can have any ideas, I'd be glad to hear them.
Yeah, well, I'm sure we can, I could develop a school messenger message quite easily. That will just, you know, just go over, you know, one, you have to stop. PennDOT does have some really good diagrams available where they say, they even have a poster available that you can get. So I can contact PennDOT, get those diagrams in PDF format, and can easily put together a school messenger email that could go out to all the parents and just as a friendly safety reminder, this is one you must stop, these type of intersections, and what constitutes a divided highway and what doesn't constitute a divided highway.
Any other comments or questions for Katie, Ben, or John? No? Good. Thank you to the three of you, by the way. Well done and appreciate the time you put into that. So Andrew, I'm going to just pivot a little bit. I mean, you're still going to be up in a minute, but I know we have the maintenance agreement with Palmer Township on there before. I'm going to flip that to after the capital improvement plan update, just as a FYI, because I know we've been going back and forth with that as of, recently as of today. But I wanted to share with the board that, you know, in 2022, we presented, we were back in the library at this time, if I remember correctly. We presented the capital improvement plan to the board as a five-year plan and what, you know, how we prioritize those projects, you know, what we're looking to do. So now that we are, you know, two years, three years down the road and we're about in the halfway point, we have completed a lot of projects over the past, you know, three, four, five years, but we also have a couple of projects that are, you know, really, you know, coming up pretty quickly that we wanted to talk through and kind of share with you where we are. The elevator at the high school was the most recent, you know, we recently brought that last month. So that's, you know, on our capital improvement, you know, plan. The middle school roof, you've heard me talk about, Ken talk about probably three, four, or five times. That we are looking to bring to the board for recommendation over the next, within the next month or two. So we felt as a team, that would be really important for us to just provide a general update of where we are, the history, where we are now, where we want to go, and then be able to answer any questions that are associated with that. So we certainly have some, you know, comments, you know, after this presentation. But Ken, I'll kick it off to you first, because I know you want to provide some historical context before Andrew speaks, and then we can kind of bounce some answers back and forth.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Dr. Ziyadik. So like you mentioned, this is a really exciting time of year for the facilities department. It's the time of year when we're really looking at capital projects and planning for the work over the summer. So tonight, Andrew from CHA and myself will be reviewing and highlighting the capital improvement plan. That's where those projects start and where they reside until they come to the point where we're in design and going out to bid. So really, two points that we'd like to highlight tonight and focus on. We'd like to share our current five-year capital project plan. So that's based on the comprehensive plan that was completed in 2022. It really, it summarizes on a one-page the district's needs, priorities, and/or possible grant opportunities. And it's used so that we can, we can plan from the facility side. So we know what projects are coming up from our end. And it's also used in the business office, so they can properly plan the finance side so that the monies are available to support the projects and that we're realistic on both ends too with the projects. We try and look at planning so that the financing is even as it could be throughout each year and then also to make sure that the scope of all the projects are doable to occur over a summer. And then the second part of that is, you know, this time of year, like I said, we're getting ready to present some of these projects that we're looking at this coming summer. Now, this year is a little bit odd, because we presented half of a project last month that the board approved for refurbishment of the high school elevator. And that was done just because of lead times on that equipment that the contractor would need so that it could occur over the summer. But the second half of that project, and like Dr. Ziyadik said, the middle school roof project is going to be coming up next month and then in April. So later on in the presentation, Andrew will highlight some of this information. Gino, if you go to the next slide. So I did mention, and so did Dr. Ziyadik, that the original plan was, came about in 2022. And you can see the steps that are outlined there, number one through six. So at that time, we did a full-scale review. We started from scratch. The previous plan that we were working off of ended with the Palmer project. So that incorporated all of the upgrades, additions, renovations, new buildings to a majority of our elementary schools, so very successful plan. And as Palmer was under construction, we said, hey, we need to look at our district-wide buildings and update the plan so we can move forward. So you can see, we went down through those steps. And quite frankly, we continue to go through those steps each year, not to the extent that we did back in 2022. But we constantly talk about our capital improvement plan at our facility meetings each month. And we look back and we adjust as needed. We adjust priorities, we adjust from the financial side, and then we plan each year. So it really is a living document that we, that we look at and we always are adjusting and reviewing. So the next slide here is a list of some of the capital projects that we completed over the past five years. And this is projects that were completed under the previous capital plan and then also the new capital plan. You can see the projects here vary in scope. You can see new buildings there, Palmer and Cheston, and the stadium renovation. And then on the other side, you can see projects of a smaller scope, like the Shawnee Boiler. So all these projects that you see here resided and originated from the capital planning process. So it is a key document in the facility department. It really is our north star, it's our guide, and everything comes from that. One item that we're not necessarily talking about tonight, but in the past, we've talked about on many occasions and spent a lot of hours here with the board, is the high school project. So the high school project started off in 2022 in that updated capital improvement plan, like all the other projects there you see for the major, major projects. And you'll see later on in one of the slides, all of our higher priority items. You're going to see many of the items listed off of, or from the high school and a lot of higher numbers. So looking at that back in 2022, that's when we come to realize, hey, you know, we think we met the threshold to actually look at either renovations, additions, you know, and then we decided on a new building would be the right course of action for the high school and, you know, on the finance end as well. We spent a lot of time talking about that. So it's really exciting moving along with that capital project. So that's a key capital project that resided and originated from the capital improvement plan. So also listed here, you can see current capital projects. And I'll turn it over to Andrew, and he'll give you some more detail on the whole process.
Great. Thank you, guys. Glad to be back in front of you. Excuse me. So I just kind of wanted to go through and give you guys a refresher on, on the capital plan, how we use it as a tool to identify needs throughout all of the buildings in the district, how we, how we can try to bring objectivity to what can be sometimes very subjective based on people's feelings or how they see it. So what we do is we have an evaluation matrix. So across the top are different parameters, right? Safety, curricular value, the physical condition of the item in question, a domino effect, like how does changing out the lighting, right? Upgrading to LED lights, how could that spark other things to be upgraded as well? Well, if we're changing the lights, we'll probably be changing the ceiling. If we're changing the ceiling, maybe we want to look at the HVAC condition at that point or fire alarm. So the domino effect, how's that going to affect other impacts or other aspects of the building down to sustainability, right? So those are, those are kind of the parameters that we look at. We give them a rating, basically a five through a one or a zero, and you can kind of see what those different scores would mean. You know, how many people do they affect? Would it close school if something shut down? Like, hey, you only have one boiler in the building. And if that boiler went out, you know, that would close school in the winter. So we have a, we have a table that kind of outlines how all those work. And then at the bottom, going left to right, we have importance factors. You know, there are some things on here that are, you know, obviously far more important than others. So we try to, we try to grade that and give that importance factor. You know, the school district's out here to, you know, provide an education to students in safe buildings. So safety, curricular value, and educational impact would all have an importance rating of a five. Whereas, you know, still important, energy and sustainability, while that's something we strive for, it's not on the same level as something like safety. So that's, that's how, when we go through and we identify an item, okay, we need to upgrade the elevator. We will take this, this rubric here and give it a score for each of these different parameters, and it will spit out a overall priority, a weighted priority. On the next slide, here is just a snapshot of what, you know, the most, the highest priority items. You can see kind of the grading scale there. And we give an estimated project cost. This is back from the last time we updated towards the end of 2024. And like Ken said, a lot of these items, you can see where they are. They're at the high school, and that's what had sparked the conversation about, you know, a major project there. So we can sort this in many different ways. We can sort it by category. We could look at all your fire alarm projects. We could look at all your paving projects together. We could sort it by building, or we could sort it by priority. So this should look very familiar to you guys. And this is how we go through at all our meetings and really hone in on what the, you know, what projects are we looking at for next year or the year after or developing that five-year plan. So on the next slide, was the five-year plan that we looked at in 2024 during our last update there. So you can see the two projects that we had projected for 2025 are the two projects that we are working on right now, going out to bid and in design. And so again, what we try to do here is, is give as even of a dollar value as we can for each year, grouping similar projects together to try and, you know, create savings, maybe by doing a district-wide paving project. And we can, we can capitalize on economy of scale. But this, like Ken said, is a living document. We get together monthly and look at this. And things may tweak, projects may come on the list due to an emergency. Projects may come on the list due to funding availabilities and grants. You know, we want to capitalize on the ability to, you know, smartly and effectively use grant money that comes up. So again, you know, just a living document, and it's, it's a way for us to track through the project and something that we can look at, you know, tweaking based on the administration recommendations, ours and the board's. So if you can go to the next slide, you know, we just want to talk about what the next steps are. And it's, you know, everything that Ken and I have just talked about. We continually review and update the most urgent needs to the district. Again, we try to go after any grants that we can to help, help fund these projects. We monitor the five-year plan with, with your direction. And we prepare documents and we go out to bid and then we execute. So, you know, just a synopsis of how that plan is put together. And it's, you know, something that, you know, right now, we're working on the cost updating for 2025 costs. And just as a, something I forgot to mention on that five-year plan is the costs that are listed for each subsequent year, they do include an inflation, you know, an assumed deflation percentage. So that number may look a little different than if you were to look at the total recommendation list, because that's like a 24 or 25-year cost. And then we'll just kind of increase from there so that we're budgeting appropriately. And then for anybody familiar with Cheston, this is a great picture, really, of, of that finished product when, when we had first opened. We shape our buildings, therefore, they shape us. So I thank you guys for your time, and if there's any questions, I'm sure, I forgot to turn it over to Dr. Ziyadik.
It's all good, Andrew.
Just on a roll.
Stay up there, it's all good. So I'm sure there'll be some questions, but I didn't want to intervene when you were on the roll. So, Gino, if you can go back maybe two or three slides, just go to the very first slide of, go back two more. So you can, you can stay on the rubric for a second, Gino. We felt as a team it was really important to add this, and we went, we had discussions about this. And the reason why we felt so important to re-ground and refresh everybody on the process itself is because there can't be, there can only be one priority number one, right? This rubric allows us, when we have discussions internally, to make the best decision and remove the subjectivity, as Andrew said, and the emotions behind it. Because it's very easy to just say, oh, my gosh, we need this, we need this. But that does not provide us a systematic way of addressing the needs. So we felt very passionate about the rubric itself and why we need to have it in this presentation. Another comment, Gino, if you can go to the next slide. This was a snapshot of our original plan, right? So our original plan had probably four pages to this. This was really just one of the, one of the areas that we took a snapshot of. And I say that because if you do take a look at this, and I'm going to just, just say it, you know, to be transparent, you can see there are three items that mention the public library up on that slide right there, okay? If you go to the next slide, Gino, you'll see that within our current five-year, you will not see that in that five-year as projects are planned out. There's a couple of things I do want to mention for this, just to be transparent. One is you heard Andrew and Ken both say that this is not a static document, it's dynamic. So it is fluid, we make changes to it. You know, perfect example is, you know, with the ESAR funds, we had the opportunity to address the indoor air quality devices at the high school, middle school. That was not a priority eight or nine. That was probably a priority, you know, five or six. But because the grant opportunities allowed us to address those types of needs, that is a project we addressed, although it didn't rise to the top priority itself. So there's always some fluidity there that allows us, you know, the decisions to address them as we see fit with different opportunities such as grants. And you did mention that, Andrew. What I will say about the public library is the following. We do, the way that we prioritize our, our projects, you know, first and foremost, we look at our list, we see where our top priorities are. We always, and we will always, address the buildings with students in first, because that's why we're here. We also then want to address the buildings that serve our students, such as transportation, et cetera. That does not mean that we do not want to address anything else. We also, as an administrative team, board, school district, recognize that we have a responsibility to the taxpayers in the community to also make the, you know, address the issues at our, at our buildings, the public library being one of those. So the most recent conversation, which was today, we've gone back and forth as, as a team, CHA, Alloy, our administration internally, and operations team, quite frankly. And we are looking at ways to make some of those adjustments and address those needs by the library in, you know, in the bigger picture of our capital improvement plan over the next five years. So we do believe that there are some opportunities within there to add some, some library pieces into the plan. But this was the last document that we had internally, and we just wanted to be transparent about that. But that doesn't mean that we won't be looking at ways to address other needs within there. So just wanted to make sure we were honest about that and transparent, because we recognize that we need to address a lot. The other piece, because I think Michael probably asked me this, is, hey, how are we going to pay for all this? So I just, you know, upfront and honest, I believe that the most recent number, and we can clarify this for the next meeting, Jack, if you don't mind, but the, the most recent number in the cap reserve was about 2.5 million. Now, I could be off, could be plus or minus 500,000 there, I don't know. But that was the, the last number that was given to us. So we will certainly need to borrow for these projects. And what we've tried to do is, if you see the numbers, we've tried to balance the projects and the cost so that it's relatively consistent, you know, over the next five years, so that we weren't saying, hey, we need $15 million worth of projects next year, but three, you know, five years down the road. So we tried to balance it within the priority list. So we tried to balance it within the priority list as well. Um, so there's a lot of movement there. We do have a, we do have a meeting, uh, in the very near future, uh, with our financial, you know, people with Raymond James. We will be discussing this, uh, need as well as the high school, um, in regard to planning and how to, to pay for these projects. Uh, but wanted to get ahead of that and be open and honest with everybody at, you know, here tonight, um, that those are all upcoming steps. So I think that captures everything I wanted to say. Andrew, Ken, if I missed anything, please feel free to jump in, but wanted to make sure we were all on the same page there. So I guess now, any questions, comments, anything that we can answer for you? Mike, there has to be a question.
All right, I appreciate that.
Okay, all right, um, I, again, I think having the updated list, because as I was looking at the old one, so going through and having that sent to us would be greatly appreciated. Um, Trace and I were discussing different things as far as, you know, the ad-hoc, so there'll be an email out as far as that's concerned, so that we can start looking at the groups and seeing as far as, um, you know, our buildings and grounds and being able to discuss some of the items with the CIP and the high school and also the budgeting part of it. So, um, look for that email. But, um, thank you for the presentation and, um, if nobody else has any questions? Okay. All right, with that.
And there's one other item on the agenda, I apologize.
Yes, you do.
So, yeah, we do have the maintenance agreement with Palmer Township. Andrew, um, I know we've been going back and forth and there's been a discussion whether we actually need it or not. Um, you want to kind of share the background there historically?
Yeah, um, so this is, this is something that is typical on, on a new construction project, to have a maintenance agreement for a set amount of time, roughly a year and a half after the project ends, that, you know, the developer is responsible for, uh, things that may go wrong. Especially, th- this is a lot of right-of-way improvements that, that would be dedicated back over to the municipality. Um, I, I've been working with, uh, Kingsbury's office, uh, to go over with Palmer Township, uh, some previous documentation that was, um, you know, put forth when we were working on the developer's agreement, uh, to ensure that the, the need for the actual, um, maintenance agreement a- and the security that would need to be posted for that work. Um, you know, the, the one thing that I, I'd say right now is that, uh, when we opened the building in 2023 and in September, you know, about 90 to 95% of our site work was complete. Um, and that's basically been an 18-month period as of now. Uh, what we were waiting on was getting the spray irrigation system up and running, uh, back there. So, you know, at a minimum, we are looking to try to, uh, work through what may have already been part of a, you know, an 18-month timeline that the school district has maintained, y- you know, a- and would be done with kind of that responsibility. Uh, there, there's other things too that, you know, there really isn't much out there that's being dedicated back to the township. It's all school district improvement. You know, one of those, uh, exceptions would be that walking path in the back that connects the neighborhood over to the, um, uh, the Shrin Community Center area. Uh, so again, just working with Kingsbury's office and we should have an update, uh, by next month.
Appreciate it, Andrew, thank you very much. So Ms. Tass, I guess at the end of the day, we don't necessarily have anything as of right now that will be going to the board agenda. Um, we may have the maintenance agreement, that all depends. Uh, but the other items, we will make sure we get answers, uh, to the board of directors as an update. Uh, and then that most likely will be on the March agenda, uh, if I have to take a guess.
Josh, if you're having a maintenance agreement on the agenda, are we gonna, is there a draft copy we can have now?
Yeah, I can get the team, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, public to be heard on Buildings and Grounds Agenda items. If you could come to the podium, sign your name. And you'll be allotted the five minutes to speak.
Okay, good evening. Um, so my name is Eric Adams and I'm here to represent, um, if you can try to remember back a few, a few minutes ago. I'm here to represent the current provider of the bus radio communication system. So again, my name, uh, our name of our company is Industrial Communications. Um, so we have been providing the service for many years. Um, Mr. Bernhardt made an excellent point of addressing what's wrong with the system today. We, we understand it better than anyone else and we are keeping it patched together as best as we can to keep the wheels on the bus, so to speak. Um, so I applaud, uh, his efforts to finally upgrade the system. I do want to make a couple of key points, though. Um, the, uh, the main point I want to make to the board is that there was no spec. Um, no one ever came to us or Two Way and said, here's what we would like. Um, you know, please bid it. Instead, it was just, hey, can you get us, can you give us a proposal? So we, we put a lot of effort into providing a proposal to, uh, Mr. Bernhardt and, um, there was some dialogue back and forth and, uh, and that was it. So tonight I hear things like, um, well, we wanted a 5550 radio and we, we proposed a 2500 because a 2500 is much less expensive and still meets all of your needs. Do you really want a 5550? We'd be happy to, to quote a 5550. Um, another comment was made, well, Two Way's going to put all new parts in the bus and Industrial is going to just sort of hobble things together. That's not accurate either. We're going to inspect all the existing cables and antennas and we're only going to replace things that were found to be defective. Uh, we approached Bethlehem School District. Bethlehem School District, the Bethlehem Area School District said, well, we don't want this hourly rate, just give us a lump sum. Fine, so we went from 375 for an installation. We raised it to 400 for Bethlehem School District. So they were happy with that. If we did the same thing in your case, it would add $2,500 to, to the, to the job. Um, the most important thing is, uh, my quote was submitted back in October. At that time, we were designing a brand-new system for, for coverage. Um, our company is basically custom-designing a system for the Eastern Area School District. So at the time, we had to throw a number on it. The number was 3850 a mobile. Um, as of Sunday, I shared a revised quote with Mr. Bernhardt on Sunday. The price is now $24 a mobile and that's a maximum number. So now we're very comparable now for the annual rental amount. We're ve- very comparable to Two Way. If we are able to proceed with this system with the Bethlehem Area School District, who we are in negotiation with right now, that $24 will come down to 18 or lower because it'll be a combined system. And we're very close to getting that done with Bethlehem's, the Bethlehem School District. So, so again, now we're talking $100,000 difference in the price. Um, the, uh, I just want to point out, I will not, don't want to say anything about Two Way. It's a, it's a good company, they're reputable. But I want the board to know that Industrial Communications is 100% owned by graduates of the Eastern Area School District and residents. We've been here a long time. We're designing the system because we're, we're vested in the, in the, in the community. Um, we also have a system in, at the Bethlehem School District. Uh, Two Way is in Bethlehem, but the Bethlehem Area School District chose our company, not just for their bus system, but for all their schools. Every elementary school in the school district. Um, we're honored to serve and provide their radios for them. Uh, of course, we also provide your radios for Mr. Ramali. Um, so we do your other buildings as well, communications in the other buildings, um, and the police. Um, so again, that's, that's the main thing I wanted to say. Um, I just hope that you'll reconsider, um, the idea of deciding really what you want. We're happy to do anything you want. Put it out to bid and, uh, give us a, a fair shot at saving, uh, the school district some money. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else in the public? No? Okay. All right, then next we have Educational Technology and Student Supports.
Yep, so this evening, we, I think we only have two IU 220 contracts that we want to bring. We will have a few next month. Katie, we'll have about five next month so far, but as of tonight, we have the two that we're ready to discuss.
Sure, so the first one is for what we called last time an associate teacher, which is a one-to-one paraprofessional for a student located in an IU program. This is a separate contract than last time. It's just an addition, it's, um, similar language. And then the second one is for our IDEA Part B Use of Funds Agreement. This is, this comes up every year and the IU houses our IDEA funds. From there, we then submit documents indicating what we're going to use our IDEA funds for, and then it gets passed through to the district level. This is just an agreement with the IU that they're going to continue to house that and then we request reimbursement from them. Any questions about either of those?
Hey, Dr. Schulz, I had a question last night about the unemployment, uh, wording and everything.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to get a, uh, little history of how any unemployment costs they build back to us over, I mean, is somewhere we can...
Past history that they build back to us?
How many times with these aids that they could not replace? If they're in such need elsewhere, I mean, they should be able to replace them in other districts, but I'd just be curious.
Okay.
To see what those costs were over the years.
I, I don't know if Josh wanted to...
Yeah, no problem. No, Mike, I can certainly answer that. We can certainly do the deep dive for that. I will tell you, when I spoke to Dr. Wolf, well, he did look back there and let me know that there has been zero that they've built back to us, probably since at least 2014. We looked at 1415, so there was zero and he didn't foresee that occurring again. But to your point, we can certainly look at the actual, the actual numbers. But to him, he, he double-checked it and said there's been zero.
I mean, I'm sure they can find employment for them with all the needs throughout the county, so.
Correct.
I just was curious.
Yep.
If we had any charges.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, and next we have public to be heard on Educational Technology and Student Support Items. Anyone in the public to speak? Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll have those moving forward then. Okay, number nine, other business?
I have a question.
Okay.
How are we doing with the Greenwood Avenue project?
The project or the baseball field or the concession stands or everything above?
Everything above.
All right, so the JV baseball field, I sent an update to you probably a month or two ago. The under, the, the drainage, the under drainage was done in November. All right, so that's been done. They have to have the grass grow, that's what they're waiting for. That project is done. Um, the concession stand, that is actually, I believe, in the code review piece with Palmer Township right now. Um, we've looked at the, the drawings, we've been working with them. So we did get an update from them today on that. That's where it is, so they expect that to be completed in the spring. Uh, the, yeah, concession stand. The, the restroom, um, and then the other, uh, project, the actual Greenwood Hart, you know, Hartley, they're expecting that to be started and hopefully completed by summer. That was the last update that we got. Uh, if anything changes, I'll certainly let you know.
Okay.
Sure.
I just wanted to ask the administration, um, I know we don't respond to public, uh, but if you could address Mr. Adams' comments and notes that he presented to us, you know, to the board in a separate, uh, email or cover letter or discussion, I'd appreciate, uh, just, so, I mean, I've been a longtime vendor. They're still a vendor in the district and I think they're, or the board is at least do, um, the story on exactly how this transpired and what Ben is recommending moving forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One thing, Dr. Ziatic, you had mentioned recently to the board, um, some information that the, the Impact Program in Northampton County was, um, in jeopardy. And I was wondering if you had an update on that, on the status of that?
Yep, I appreciate that, Ms. Iago. So, uh, for those of you that aren't familiar with the Impact Project, that was a, a program, a diversionary program brought over, uh, from Lehigh County about two years ago. We were actually the pilot here in Northampton County. Um, that allows our first-time offenders through disciplinary process uh, to essentially complete a program of meeting goals, expectations. Um, and then that, that offense gets expunged from their record. I might not be using the right term, expunged, but it is no longer on their record. Uh, so it's really something that we find valuable. Um, that's the reason why we piloted it. Um, we received information about maybe two to three weeks ago that that was in jeopardy of being disbanded in Northampton County. Um, and we are in full support of it. So, uh, you know, I will go on record and say that we are in full support of that, uh, for many reasons, but I did ask chief to just come back tonight. Uh, you were probably in the parking lot. Um, but we did talk about this, you and I, uh, multiple times in regard to where we are as a district, our beliefs, our values. Um, but there was a meeting that was scheduled for, it was either last Friday or upcoming Friday. Um, can you provide an update just to this whole group for us?
I do want to make one point of clarification before, uh, John speaks and that is our administrative team was in full support of continuing the Impact Program, not disbanding it. Um, and then we do have some questions that we've worked with John in, in terms of, um, how students are, um, uh, identified into, into those programs. And you don't have to get into all that tonight, but, uh, just wanted to make sure that Josh's point was clear that we're in support of the program, not disbanding the program.
Yes, absolutely. And, and when I was made aware, uh, about three weeks ago by the director of the Impact Project, that Northampton County District Attorney Stephen Barata at the time had elected to, uh, put the project on hold. Uh, a subsequent meeting between the Impact Project and Mr. Barata's office, I think, resolved some of the misconceptions or misunderstandings, uh, that weren't passed on to Mr. Barata's office from the prior district attorney's office. So as of right now, the Impact Project is accepting referrals again from us. Now, the way that works is, Dr. Ziatic indicated, uh, it's a diversionary program for first offenders. So any one of our students committing what would be a criminal offense within our jurisdiction, basically the, the realm of the school day, um, once it's determined that a juvenile referral would be appropriate, we submit that information to the district attorney's office. One of the assistant district attorneys would make a ruling as far as whether this particular student is a viable candidate for the Impact Project. If they are deemed viable, the referral then is directed to the Impact Project. And as Dr. Ziatic indicated, uh, there's a number of, uh, requirements, number of, uh, different goals that that student has to meet in order for them to, quote-unquote, pass the project and have that, um, offense forgiven. Uh, like I said, it, it never really goes to a formal referral, so it's never appears on their record. Again, it's kind of a one-time, you know, opportunity for some of these students. Uh, we've been pretty much involved with it since September of 2023. Uh, unfortunately, I don't have any hard statistics for you tonight, but just that, um, observation over the last year and a half, uh, I think students in our district that have benefited from this program have done very, very well. We do not see a lot of recidivism, or the recidivism that we have historically seen. To give an idea, the project was brought over from Lehigh County. Uh, it's been in effect almost 12 years up there with a great deal of success. Uh, Carbon County and Monroe County are also looking at, uh, beginning that project as well due to the success that, that's shown in Lehigh County.
Yeah, so John, just the other piece that I'll just add to everybody is that we did send a letter to, uh, Barata's office uh, in support of that program to, to continue.
Yes.
So that was sent on behalf of, of the administration.
Great, I just, um, if the status were to change again or becomes in question, you know, please just let us know. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other business? Okay, is there any public to be heard on non-Age? Oh, I, I'm sorry, I wanted to make a comment. Um, so we're talking about the concession stand and the bathrooms and everything else up by the JV baseball field. And I'm just wondering, is it in our best interest to hold off doing that until we discuss further the new high school and different things that would be going in there?
Yeah, so it's a great question, Joey. We've actually had the same conversation multiple times. Um, you know, at the time, when, I would say most recently, being that the high school is six years out, seven years out, um, we just... we decided that we felt it was the right thing to still continue with that project because of that reason. So that's where we landed. If there's other, you know, conversations or other thoughts, certainly open to those, but that's where our internal team decided.
Just wanted to put it out there. Okay.
Especially because we're not paying for it. It's part of the deal to open the road, so. Okay.
Yeah, I just, I realize that. What I'm saying, though, is if we're going to do that and we're going to design it, I'd hate to waste the money and have something, you know, if it's putting the money in an escrow account or doing something or putting it somewhere that when we're going back and we're building it, that the money is there to fund.
Well, the drainage system was part of it. That's already taken care of. And then it's a bathroom, not a concession stand. So.
Okay.
Right? Am I right?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, location of it, I don't, I just wanted to put it out there.
Okay.
Okay, is there?
Can you make me say? I would just note that that is something that I've thought about. I've talked to Alloy Five about it, the location of the bathrooms out there. And the facility is going to be located right next to the outside switchgear that is the main electrical feed for all the athletic fields. There's really not a lot we would do or change to that utility. And the location of those bathrooms were incorporated and designed into the original Conkle Track project. So it was always intended to be, have bathrooms out there, since the utilities are there. So I think there'd be very little flexibility of moving those. And we really do think it could be incorporated in the new high school design. So, you know, it, quite frankly, could turn into a bigger building or some type of portion like that, storage. All good thoughts, but I think it can be incorporated into the design.
You know, you never know, like an inside facility to train. You know, I'm just saying.
Or Dr. Balt's office.
Well, that too. Okay, so, sorry, public to be heard on non-agenda items. No? Okay. And then we can call for adjournment?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.